Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Order of Business, June 14, 2022, regular meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council. This meeting is being called to order at 6:37 PM. Madam Clerk, please take roll call.
Dave Abdallah.
Here.
Hassan Ahmad.
Here.
Moby Doon.
Here.
Nancy Breyer.
Here.
Robert Coniston.
Here.
Ray Muscat.
Here.
Tom Winsell.
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have your call.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk.
You're welcome.
Next up is our Pledge of Allegiance, and we have a guest from North Carolina here, a young guest. I love it when we have young people over here. Very bright young girl, going to be one of our future judges, hopefully, or at the very minimum, an attorney. And I'd like to have her lead us with the Pledge of Allegiance. Her name is Lamis Darur.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Lamis Darur. Next up is item number three, our agenda approval.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the amended agenda for the regular meeting of June 14, 2022 as submitted.
Motion made by Councilman Muscat, supported by Councilman Baydoun. Is there any discussion on that? Hearing none.
Council Chair.
Yes, Councilman, go ahead.
I don't know if I could do this or not, but I would like to walk on something. 9L. I'd like to talk about the special meeting that we're having next Tuesday about the charter amendment. And just a brief, so during a meeting, we can discuss what that meeting, that special meeting is going to be about, because I got a lot of calls and people don't know what's going to happen at that meeting. We can add it on to 9L and just give a brief explanation.
Yeah, like an intro to it. Okay. I don't mind, Councilman, but let's just make sure with Madam Clerk, I'm not sure if it'd be an agenda item. I'm just thinking out loud here, maybe it might be a better spot for it, maybe during public comments, maybe. Or, I'm sorry, maybe announcements from council members. That might be a better spot for it, I believe.
What actually do you want, Councilman?
I'd like to have it during the meeting, because a lot of people, you know, a lot of people go.
You want just discussion, though? Or is there going to be a motion made on an item? Because we don't have backup. Not saying that.
You can't just talk about it and tell the residents what's going to happen at that meeting.
Corporation Council, would that be a public comment?
I'm thinking during the city council announcements might be a better spot for that.
Well, it could be done. The reason to have something added to the agenda is if there's going to be any action taken on it. If there's no official action taken on it, then it could be dealt with under announcements, as the council chair suggested.
That's what I was asking about, the motion. Would there be a motion?
And it is, for those in the audience, there is a study session that I've set on June 21st. 21st, correct? Yep. And that's, if I'm not mistaken, 6:00.
5:30?
5:30 or 6:00 PM?
I think 5:30.
It is 5:30? Okay. So 5:30 PM here in the council chamber. So this coming Tuesday. So, Councilman, during the city council announcements, I'll give you an opportunity to be able to go ahead and give an intro to that, and then it's a general discussion about that. No problem.
Council Chair, I'm just curious, and nothing to take towards the Councilman, but if we put it as 9L, I mean, there's nothing for us voting on it.
Yep.
Yeah, it's not going to be on there.
That's exactly what we just.
Yeah, it's not going to be on there.
Okay. So, yeah.
Okay. All right. So, motion made by Councilman Muscat, seconded by Councilman Baydoun. Any other discussion on that? Hearing none? Let's go ahead and take it to a vote. All in favor, please state "aye."
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next up on the agenda is approval of the minutes.
Council Chair.
Councilman Baydoun.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the minutes of the regular meeting of May 24, 2022, as outlined in 4A.
Support.
Motion made by Councilman Baydoun, supported by Councilman Ahmad. Is there any discussion on that? Hearing none? All in favor, please state "aye."
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Before we go to the next one, I just wanted to remind the council members and those in the audience and those on Zoom, please make sure you get as close as possible, within a reasonable amount, to the microphones, because I've gotten some emails from residents when they watch it on Zoom or any other type of venue, they're not able to hear what the council members are stating. So, no leaning back when you're speaking, and then no turning your heads when you speak, and try to be as close as you can to the microphone. Next up is public hearings, and let's go make sure we vote on it. Yep. Yep, motion carried. Okay. So, next up is public hearings and comment on agenda items only. We'll start with anybody on Zoom first, to keep Leslie happy, and then we'll go ahead and go to people in the audience. You will have two minutes. You'll have two minutes to come on up and speak on anything on the agenda. So, let's go ahead and start with Zoom. Anybody on Zoom that would like to comment on agenda items?
We do have one.
Okay. So, we have our Treasurer, Lisa Hicks-Platon. Madam Treasurer, if you could do me a favor, when you do speak, just please state if you're speaking as a treasurer or as a resident, street you live on and city you live in, please.
Hello. Good evening. Thank you.
Good evening.
So, I'm Lisa Hicks-Platon. I'm speaking as the Treasurer. With item 9J, with Tifa, I want to thank Tom Roscoe and all of the Tifa Board members for their hard work. But I did want to reiterate that Tifa is an independent agency, and I'm not quite sure why any of their budget would be part of our corporate budget, meaning the general fund, because they have their own account. We, when Treasury collects taxes for Tifa, we do a disbursement every 15 days, which is required by the State of Michigan. So, when they ma-
Uh-oh.
Actually, it comes from them directly.
Wait, Lisa?
Yes.
You got disconnected when you said "when they."
Oh, I'm sorry.
Can you repeat that part?
I'll go back, I'll go.
Can you repeat that part of the sentence, please?
Okay. So, I was talking about Tifa, and as we already acknowledged, they're an independent agency. And I know it was mentioned that they were a part of the corporate budget, and I want to make sure we're clear, that general fund does not pay for any of their expenditures. Their expenditures are paid out of their Tifa budget, their own budget. And what happens with Treasury, I just want you to know, we collect the money, and we do the disbursement every 15 days, which is required by the Michigan Department of Treasury. So, that includes like the bond payments, like they pay a portion of the police station bond, the Justice Center. And so, their board approves that. We submit that invoice to the Tifa Board for their approval before we ever transfer any money. So, I just wanted to be clear, just, you know, share that if I can. Thank you.
Okay. But just for clarification, I don't know if Tom is still here, or I don't have the memory if he's still on the-
He's right here.
I am right here.
Oh, there's Tom. Sorry, you're on this side. So, based on what the Treasurer is saying, one of the items in here under operating expenses says city contribution, $138,500.
That's probably a bond payment. So, like, do you want me to answer that, Council Chair?
Well, let's see what Tom can answer on that.
The question on the city contribution, back when they set up the Tifa, you could establish, how do I say it? Basically, that's Tifa reimbursing the city for doing things for us, as in handling our accounts and whatnot for any services that are provided for us. Because the Tifa has the ability to go out and hire John Smith CPA to write our checks, to handle our accounting, whatnot. But, in the interest of transparency, the way they set it up was basically hiring the city to do that. And so, therefore, the Tifa, according to the Tifa Act, is allowed to give the city an amount of money. And the agreed amount was 6% of the estimated tax capture revenue, so.
No problem. Treasury had another thing to add to that?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I mean, I agree with Mr. Roscoe. That is what we call inner funds. So, when general fund pays something and it's for Tifa, Tifa reimburses the general fund, just like water does and library does, and all those different departments, based on what they owed the general fund.
Okay. Thank you very much, Madam Treasurer. Next up, I see nobody else on Zoom. Is that correct?
No, there I just-
Any questions?
Mr. Jamal, Director Jamal.
Okay. Director Jamal, please state if you're speaking as a director or as a resident.
Good afternoon. I'm speaking as a director, but I am wearing my compliance, budget compliance hat. Everything said about Tifa is correct, but let's make it, let's make the record straight. The contribution by Tifa to the city can be included in the corporate budget as expected revenue. Other than that, the Tifa budget is a quasi-governmental agency, has nothing to do with the city corporate budget. It's paid directly, it's approved by Tifa Board, the city council, you, your owners, does not approve Tifa expenditure as a line item. It's approved by the quasi-governmental agency called Tifa. It's a tax increment finance authority under the city, under the state regulatory guidelines, the state treasury regulatory guidelines. You only approve the overall budget, and that would be actually, that's it. And you will approve also, also, what's the contribution that Tifa gives to the city corporate budget as a revenue item under Tifa.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Director. Next up on Zoom, we have our ordinance director, Bill Deschroun. Please state if you're speaking as a director or as an individual.
Can you hear me, Council Chair?
Hello.
Good evening. I just wanted to, real briefly, I'm speaking as a director, I just wanted to briefly thank the administration, Tifa, Tim Emery, Mr. Roscoe, for giving me the opportunity to have a full-time employee in the Tifa district. I think it's going to help us out immensely moving forward. It's a wonderful idea, it's a wonderful collaboration, and I thank all of those people at the city council and everybody involved very much for that. This is unique, and it's a great opportunity to fill a void that we've had, it's been very problematic. I've had actually five different part-time employees in the Tifa district in 14 months. So, I'm hoping this will help out with that and other aspects as well. So, that's it. Council Chair, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Director, Bill Deschroun from ordinance. Anybody else on Zoom? Okay? I don't see anybody else. Okay? So, anybody in the audience that has any public comments on any of the agenda items? Come on up. Please state your name, street and city you live in.
Hello. Rachel Lapointe, Merrick Street, Dearborn Heights. I had questions about 9I, which was the auction of the vehicles. So, on the backup, it doesn't show me, it says that there's four of them were highlighted and they're city-owned, but the highlight doesn't show up on the PDF for me. So, I was just wondering, what are the four vehicles that were the city-owned vehicles?
I know it was the first, here we go, I believe it was the first four or five. Our chief is here. Online, I know it shows.
They were highlighted.
Yeah, they were highlighted. Yeah, there they are.
I think it's the first four, and then there's- The first three, the fourth.
Yeah, I'll read them to you, just in case.
Thank you, yes.
You've got the 2013 Dodge Avenger, 2013 Dodge Grand Caravan, 2013 Dodge Durango, and another 2013 Dodge Durango, and that's it.
Okay. And then, on the same item, I know back at the budget hearings, the chief mentioned, like, a Hellcat, something, some sort of car, and I didn't, and that it was going to be up for auction. And I know I had seen people talking about, oh, this is a cool car or something. I'm not a car person, but I didn't see it on the list. So, I was just wondering if that one was on there or not.
Okay. I know it's supposed to be a really fast car, and I know it's scat something, somebody help me out here.
It's scat, Council Chair, is a Chrysler, new, extremely fast, hip, and with another young generation. I'm sure the chief has told about more than a dozen in the last month.
Is it on the list, is my question?
It's on.
Which one is it? Because the char, oh, the 16 Charger?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I wasn't sure if there was another name for it. And then, last one on the same item, was the income from this auction-
It's not on the list.
The 2016 Dodge Charger is what he said.
It's not on the list.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah. That's what he says.
I just do the highlight.
Is it a Charger Hellcat?
It's on the list, it's just not highlighted.
Is it like a nickname?
The highlighted ones are city cars, the other ones are cars that were confiscated.
Are we going to keep that as a police car?
No.
It'd be a good one. Were the, was the anticipated income from this auction included in the revenues in the current budget? Or is that going to be extra on top of what was already accounted for?
I believe that would be extra. We can't determine how much it's going to be.
I know there was a discussion about forfeitures, because I re-watched that meeting recently, but thank you, that it was not included. That was the answer. Thanks.
Thank you.
Have a great one.
You too.
Great meeting, right?
Anybody else in the audience have any questions or comments on agenda items only?
I do.
Come on up.
I love her voice.
So, we have future Judge Lamis. Go ahead.
I don't need that. Okay, so, uh-
I'm sorry, I hate to bother you. Just state your full name, street you live on, city you live in.
Okay. My name is Lamis Darur. I live on 7242 Galen Glen Road in Raleigh, North Carolina. My question is, what are the cons of Tifa? Like, what's the downside of it?
Okay. Good question. I hope there are not many, but-
I don't think there's any downsides, other than we get to capture our own taxes and spend it ourselves.
None, actually. It should have been done throughout the whole city, but it was opposed by Rose Bogart many years ago. And she always even said, as a, you know, tax advocate type of person, boy, that was a mistake. And everyone who was in city government and otherwise said, yes, that was a mistake. So, the whole city could have been.
All right. Thank you.
No problem. Thank you, Lamis. Good job. Anybody else in the audience have any comments on agenda items? Seeing none?
I see Tim.
I'm sorry?
Tim is ready.
Tim, go ahead. You got to unmute yourself, Tim.
Okay.
Yep, go ahead.
Once again, whenever it comes to Tifa, the city of Dearborn Heights and city of Binghamster, we have to thank Dr. Bradford for her vision of seeing that good program.
Okay. Thank you very much, Tim. All right. Next up, we're going to go ahead to fund transfers and current claims.
Council Chair.
Councilman Ahmad.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve current claims 6-1 through 6-42 as submitted.
Support.
Okay. Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, supported by Councilman Muscat. Is there any discussion on that?
Council Chair.
Yes, go ahead, Councilman.
I do have, not a question, but a comment on our large packet that we received for the, no, I think, I'll take that.
Yeah, that's during a different section.
That's a different, no. Take that back.
Okay? Any other comments on current claims? I had a question myself on current claim number 37, and this is for our recreation director, Kim Lorenzel, if you don't mind. You might, and the question was, we purchased for $2,160 weather insurance coverage, effective date 6/11/2022. The curiosity that I had, I don't think it rained on Saturday, if I'm not mistaken.
No, it did not.
But the curiosity I had as to why, and I know I had a little conversation with you about that. First of all, let me start with this. Great job. One of the best.
Round of applause.
Thank you.
What's up there?
I could not have done that without all the help that I got, so I want to make sure that that's clear.
But the leadership stops with you, so great job.
Thank you.
It was well-run. I walked through it. I was looking for things to critique, didn't find nothing. And then, the police department did a great job, too, you know, walking around, making sure, you know, everything's staying safe. Place was clean. 99.999% of the people behaved. There was a good softball game. I apologize to the police department, which is, I understand, they lost to the fire department. But maybe they'll get them next year. But good job, and I also commend you for bringing an Arabic program, which was long needed in this city, so I appreciate that, too.
Thank you.
It was on Thursday with Basam Sala. So, with that being the case, I'm just curious, why just for one day, and why just Saturday?
Because Saturday is our major revenue day for the carnival. The other dates typically are, depending on the weather, good revenue days or medium, but Saturday is the biggest, largest day. That's all we've done in the past, so, but that could possibly change in the future, because I have some things to announce at the end of the meeting.
Yes.
To let you know.
And I told you I'd allow you to go ahead and do that, so.
Yeah, thank you.
You mentioned something about Santa Claus coming to this meeting, so I was looking forward to that. If you remember, I said, you said, I said Christmas-
I think Santa Claus comes in July, then.
Yeah, I know. But I talked to you about Santa Claus, you said, yeah, I'm going to have some presents. I said, okay, that's good.
I am going to have some presents.
Good.
Action Jackson is going to have some presents, presents.
Okay. Thank you very much, Kim. Is there any other questions on fund transfers and current claims? All right. Any discussions on that? All right. Hearing none. Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Muscat. All in favor, please state "aye."
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next up on the agenda, we have item 8A, Ecorse Creek Commission Appointment.
Council Chair.
Councilman Baydoun.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council concur with the mayoral appointment of Curtis Whitmore to the Ecorse Creek Commission. Term to expire January 2024 as outlined in 8A.
Support.
Okay. Motion made by Councilman Baydoun, supported by Councilman Ahmad. Is there any discussion on that?
Council Chair.
Councilman, go ahead.
There's a correlation with Curtis Whitmore and Gretchen Whitmore, our current governor.
That's Whitmore, not Whitmore.
Yeah. You're right. Never mind.
Council Chair.
Different spelling.
Okay. Councilman, Winsell. Winsell, I'm sorry, blanked out.
Kurt Whitmore, he's currently an employee of Dearborn Heights in the Water Department. Great guy, very, very knowledgeable about the Ecorse Creek. You sit down with that guy, you talk forever, and you learn so much about him. He's a valuable asset in our community, and he'll be a great addition to this commission.
All right. Well, my question on here was any info on him from the mayor, so I appreciate that, and I do trust your judgment, so thank you very much. Good job. All right. Well, that takes away my question from the mayor on this.
David, I also-
Is there any other discussion on this? Yes, Council?
Well, regarding Kurt, he's come to many of our meetings, the Ecorse Creek Commission. He is very knowledgeable. He's going to be fantastic to be working with us.
Great addition.
Excellent.
I really am happy about this.
Good. Good.
Okay. Well, that makes me feel even more confident approving him. Any other discussion items on that? All right. Hearing none. Motion made by Councilman Baydoun, seconded by Councilman Ahmad. All in favor, please state "aye."
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is the Zoning Board of Appeals reappointment.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City concur with mayoral reappointment of Scott Morgan to the Zoning Board of Appeals, term to expire May 2025 as outlined in 8D.
Support.
Okay. Motion made by Councilman Muscat, supported by Councilman Coniston. Is there any discussion on that? I've got a question for the mayor, if you don't mind. Can you just give us a little bit of information in regards to Mr. Scott? I did contact somebody on the zoning board, and he said he's relatively new, so just any information on him, if you don't mind, as far as why you feel he should be appointed?
Well, I've heard great things from the other commissioners, doing a great job, and they recommended that we reappoint him.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you very much. Any other, okay, so Angela's going to let me know whenever council members, in this case, maybe it might be me that's guilty, but talk again as close as you can to the microphone. Thank you, Angela. Okay. So, motion made by Councilman Muscat, seconded by Councilman Coniston. Is there any other discussions on that? Hearing none. All in favor, please state "aye."
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is reports from city officials. Item 9A, from myself, Zoning Board of Appeals reappointment.
Council Chair.
Councilman Baydoun.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council reappoint Nadia Fadlala to the Zoning Board of Appeals, term to expire May 2025 as outlined in 9A.
Support.
Motion made by Councilman Baydoun, supported by Councilman Ahmad. Is there any discussion on that? I know Nadia, myself personally, a great addition to this particular board, very knowledgeable on business, very knowledgeable on a lot of zoning issues, and has been a longtime resident of our city, so look forward to having her serve on that board again, provided she gets approved. Any other discussion items on that? Okay. Hearing none. All in favor, please state "aye."
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is item 9B from city engineer Ali Dib, Lower Rouge CSO Design Area L42 contract.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council authorize the mayor and the clerk to sign the Lower Rouge CSO Design Area L42 contract on behalf of the city as outlined in 9B.
Support.
Okay. Okay, motion made by Councilman Muscat, supported by Councilman Ahmad. Is there any discussion on that?
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat, go ahead.
This was a big, long.
Oh, come on. It's nothing.
And, to be honest with you, I could not read it all. I tried to take all the highlights that were on the, that were given us in the introductory and tried to go to the ones that I wanted to see happening, like the guarantees and things of that nature.
Yep.
But, I, you know, how long did this take to put this thing together?
You need to blame the attorneys for that, but it is, it is, so, so, Councilman, initially, this was originally approved, the contract was approved, the resolution by the council, but the resolution admitted it was an error in the resolution. We did not include the city clerk to sign the contract, so the mayor.
We had this before here, all of this?
The contract.
No, we never had the contract. The bid was awarded, but the contract wasn't there.
Okay.
I, I just, you know, it took a long time to put this thing together, I'm sure, and, and it takes a lot longer than three or four days to read it, and you need, you almost have to be a scholar to understand it, and so I just went like I said.
Construction contracts are typically that.
I went through the highlights, but you can assure that I'll be calling you on a few things.
Please.
I go through this, okay?
Please do.
So, and I know you've always been welcome to answer everything, and I do appreciate what you do.
It is a construction contract, so they're, you know, it is, it is a fully detailed contract.
Yeah, I, I.
It's fully detailed.
I see.
It is.
All right, thank you.
I'm surprised you printed it, but yes.
Thank you, Mr. Deeb.
Yes, sir.
For the Corporation Council, I know you're gonna speak yourself, but I know you had, one of the concerns that you had was in regards to liquidated damages. Has that been, has that concern been corrected in the contract?
Actually, it's, in the version that I printed out, it's still incorrect. That's what I wanted to point out. Basically, the motion should be to approve the contract or the agreement as submitted with the correction of paragraph 5.3 on page two to reflect that it is paragraph 2.3 with respect to liquidated damages, and then to authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the document as already.
I'll amend that to reflect the Corporation Council's comments.
That's, that's correct. We didn't get that direction. We got the direction from Corporation Council. I was awaiting that direction from the presenter.
So I will, I will amend it to go with his recommendation.
Okay, so motion has been amended by Councilman Muscat. Councilman Ahmad, are you seconding that again?
Correct.
Okay, so seconded by Councilman Ahmad. Any other discussion items on that? I'd like to have Mr. Deeb, if you don't mind, if you could give a one, two, three sentence. I'm always, always big on that because when residents watch, sometimes it's our world that we deal with every day, but the residents watching have no idea what this is, so can you give like a couple, two, three sentences to the audience to let them know what this is all about, please?
So, five years ago, we made the commitment to the state, to the Eagle, Environmental, Great Lakes Energy, to separate our combined sewers overflow, CSO. We have six, we have actually more than that. We have nine combined sewer overflow outfalls in the city of Dearborn Heights. Three of them, L43, 42, and 41, were committed to be completed by 2025. We completed the first combined CSO, L43, and, and about two years ago, year and a half ago, and we took it out. So we basically, when I say separated sewers, combined sewer overflow, the state requires Clean Water Act requires us to separate storm water from sanitary. Since our city is old, some areas are combined, and we still have some areas where the two are actually combined. So we separated 43, and basically, we sold bonds five years ago, $25 million dollar bond, to pay for improvements, the three plus a couple other projects, but the main expense for the bond was to pay for those CSO stations. We did, we did 43. 42 is about to start. The contractor tells me that it, right after the Fourth of July, the day after, the, this project will start. And it is a large project. It's one of the largest we've had, about $12 million almost of work. So that will take two construction seasons, and that will get a large combined sewer area separated. So then we have 41 coming up two years from now. So we're working on the design of 41, just like we committed to Eagle to do. And then we have to start looking at the future of other areas within the cities. Now, separation is the surest way, when you separate the two, that is the surest way that you really will not have in a high rain event, you don't have sewers going into your clean water. So that's, that's, that's the requirement, so.
And this is mandated by the state.
Mandated by Clean Water Act.
It's not a choice.
Federal and state, so we, they're after all communities, so Dearborn did the same. We're doing the same. Any older communities where the storm and the sanitary were at one time connected, they have to separate.
If I'm not mistaken, they're all in North Heights, correct?
They're everywhere.
Okay.
Mostly on the north side, yes, sir, but, but we do have some. On the south side, it's different, a little different because of the Ekor's Creek, but we still have combined sewers, yes. South side is a little different because older communities also have footing drains, which add to the flow. Footing drains are the ones that drain your basement. They were outlawed back in 71, 72. So, you know, different problem.
So a question I had by a resident on this about four, five days ago was, how does that affect the potential for basement backups? What are any types of backups? Does it affect?
Anytime you reduce, anytime you reduce capacity, so, so in the combined sewer overflow, you'll notice in those areas, we have restricted, restricted flow on the street covers, so the catch basins in the streets have restricted flow. The reason for that is we don't, we want the street to flood, not your basement, because of the capacity, so we intentionally minimize the street drainage because we want to reserve the capacity so it doesn't get into your basement. That's intentional. Now, when you separate them, then you start to have an extra capacity that you can reassign and work. So we keep that in mind as we remove, reduce the load on the pipe, that gives us, you know, more capacity theoretically. So it is, in addition to being mandated by law, we, it also has benefits to us, operational benefits.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any, well, I apologize because it's not your public comment. Any other questions by council members for this? All right, hearing none. Let's go ahead and take this to a vote. Motion made by Councilman Muscat with an amendment, seconded by Councilman Ahmad. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is item 9C. This is City Engineer Ali Deeb. Replacement of light pole at the Richard A. Young Center parking lot.
Council Chair.
Councilman Ahmad.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council authorize the replacement of the light pole at the Richard A. Young Center parking lot in the amount of $3,070 from IB Electric, Inc. In addition, authorize the mayor and comptroller to sign the warrants and the treasurer to issue payment as outlined in 9-C. Support.
Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, supported by Councilman Bedun. Any discussion on that?
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
Mr. Deeb, thank you for this.
Yes, sir.
Maybe, you know, it's gonna cost us $3,000 for this. Maybe we still should charge DT for all the poles that are still laying around now.
I agree.
Fewer got picked up, but there's many, many more laying around, damaging city property, the ruts that are being put in the homeowner's lawns. They need to do a better job of identifying them and getting rid of them. It looks like hell out there.
Yes, I agree.
So, you know, I'll, I'll send you some more addresses, but, I mean, I can't travel the whole city either, so I'm, I'm asking the residents that are watching this, if they're, if they see any light poles that are just, you know, laying around this, on somebody's easement there, please turn it in to either myself or DPW, and if you turn it in to me, I'll make sure that it gets to the proper personnel.
I agree.
Thank you.
Okay.
Council Chair. Councilman Bedun.
Thank you, and I just wanna, you know, speak a little bit about IB Electric and their work and their professionalism. They actually just installed two lights, a property of mine, and let me tell you, so clean, so professional, and I know that this right here at the Richard A. Young Center, I know some of the employees have been requesting this for a long time, so Mr. Deeb, I appreciate you, man, I really do.
No problem.
This is something that has been long overdue, and, you know, it just, it brings more safety to, to our recreation centers. That's really what it's all about. So thank you on that, and to Mr. Ahmad Busi, who does a phenomenal work. Thank you for bringing him on board on that as well.
No problem. Yeah, this was an emergency repair, so therefore it doesn't go out for our.
Council Chair.
Yep.
Councilman, go ahead.
Again, thank you, Mr. Deeb, for taking care of this, but I've seen it myself and it was pretty, pretty bad. Did we ever find out, how did that happen? I mean, it's, it's a.
I don't have witnesses, but they claimed that the.
We have no cameras in that building outside?
Not that I know of. No cameras. We, we think it's, yeah, come on in.
I mean, it's about 20 feet high, right?
It's, yeah, more than that.
More than 20 feet?
Robert Conrad, Director for the DPW. This was damaged when priority was dropping off the dumpster, so we will be forwarding this cost to them for replacement. We've, we've given them since the contract started what we feel is an adequate amount of time to replace the pole themselves with one of their contractors, so Mr. Deeb got this other company here to come in and replace the pole, so we'll pass these expenses on to them.
Who's going to pass those expenses to, who's going to take care of it?
Um, we'll, we'll do that, I mean.
DPW?
Either, yeah, I mean.
Think of Ali Deeb's on the job, I'm not worried about it. I know he's good.
We just want to make sure that the hazard is removed, and that we have the, and then, absolutely, every intention of.
Is this reset?
It's been.
Couple months. It was when, so right at the beginning of the contract, what, um, March, no.
March?
It was the 15th, was it March or April 15th that they started? March?
March.
So, yeah, it was like March 15th, so I think that's, you know, an adequate amount of time for them to get a contractor. I mean, it didn't take us, what?
A week.
A week? So, I mean, they had the same, they had plenty of opportunities, so, you know, if they feel they could have found a better, cheaper person to do it, they should have done that.
Okay. I just want to make sure, Mr. Deeb, the concurrence here, is that the mayor's, because it's hard to tell from the signature?
Yeah, the mayor concurred.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so, yeah, if you don't mind, whoever, because on the next one, I also had a question as far as who's concurring. Somebody can like either print, at least initials. And I, I can't speak because my handwriting is terrible, but I couldn't tell who that was, so, okay, thank you.
I thought it was the mayor.
So let's go ahead and take this particular one.
Council Chair. That's what I do, I just wanted to say something about Councilman Muscat's comment about the telephone poles on the city property. In my neighborhood, they were dumping off a couple, and I stopped and I talked to them, and they're really big poles, they're bigger than normal poles. And he said all these poles that they're dropping off are for 5G antennas. That's the reason they're doing it right now. They're just, they know where they're going, and so it's.
Some of them have been there for.
It might be, it might be six months or a year before they get to them.
Some of them have been there for three, four, five years. And some of them are gotten to the point where they're black, they're black now. I mean, they've been laying around for.
It's a eyesore to the residents.
Penny and, Penny and Hass is, or Gully is one of them.
Yeah.
So I've seen a lot of them, and, you know, I just try to keep a, I can't keep up with all of them.
You need to think about them.
I think that's gone now. The one at Beach at Ford is gone.
Yeah.
The ones on Cherry Hill are gone, but they're, they're scattered throughout the city. Somebody's gotta take responsibility for these, because I tell you what, like I said it before, if it's out in front of my house, a chainsaw would be out. The minute they drop it off, the chainsaw's coming out.
Well, it's Verizon, Council Proton, probably.
I don't care if it's Verizon.
Well, we need to, somebody reach out to Verizon.
So let's go ahead and, any other discussion items on that? Okay, so item 9C, motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Bedun. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is item 9D. This is CEDD Director Jamal weight trim contractual rate schedule for fiscal year 2022, 2023.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the weight trim contractual rate schedule for year 2022, 20 2022, 2023 as outlined in 9D.
Support.
Motion made by Councilman Muscat, supported by Councilman Bedun. Any discussions on that? I, I had a discussion item on that for our director, and I'm just, this would do respect to weight trim, but I'm just curious. I know at one point we had talked about possibly getting a different firm, and this is their hourly fees. I presume, Mr. Deeb, I believe.
It's in the back.
Oh, in the back. Oh, there he is, hiding, okay. That's your signature approved, I presume, is that correct? Concurring on that, okay. So, I, I'm not sure if it's the director, CEDD director, or yourself. Are we gonna go out and maybe consider possibly other companies just as an option based on the fees, because I look at these fees, and I don't know, good, bad, or ugly, I mean, you know, they look reasonable to me, but I'm not an expert in that particular field. With that being the case, are we gonna look at other companies, because that's something that we had talked about during the past administration of at least considering a different company. Can you fill us in on that, please?
So, yeah, so this particular contract is for CED, CDBG work, but in general, yes, the consulting firm with all the various specialties that they do, so it isn't just CDBG assistance, it's for the rest, will be procured publicly. And soon, yes.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Not a problem.
All right, so item 9D, motion, any other discussion items on that?
Council Chair.
Councilman, go ahead.
I did have a conversation with both Mr. Deeb and Director Jamal on this, and they, you know, this is something that we had already approved. We're just getting the new rate schedule, okay, and, so.
Okay. Thank you very much. So item 9D, any other discussion items? Hearing none. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is item 9E. This is from our Director of Community and Economic Development, Hassan Jamal. Resend Council Motion 22-168 and approve Eaton Center Restroom Renovation Change Order Number Two.
Council Chair.
Councilman Ahmad.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council rescind Council Motion 22-168 as that change order was not completed. In addition, approve Eaton Center Restroom Renovation Change Order Number Two in the amount of 400 due to the cancellation of the bathroom emergency call button. Furthermore, authorize the mayor and comptroller to sign the warrants and the treasurer to issue payment in the amount not to exceed 16,000 as outlined in 9-E.
Support. Okay, motion made by Councilman Ahmad, supported by Councilman Bedun. Any discussion on that?
Council Chair.
Yes, Council.
Just want to mention, it was, it's being rescinded because they, they couldn't find electric connection available in their bathroom.
Okay.
So that's the only reason. We saved some money.
Council Chair. Councilman Bedun. Is this also where our City Engineer Ali Deeb also was able to fix the bathroom here, correct? Saved us thousands and thousands of dollars? Okay, well, kudos to you on that. Thank you. Thank you. Any other discussion items? Hearing none?
Council Chair.
Yes.
Just on that motion, it's a negative 400. It's a credit of 400.
Right, correct.
I just wanted to clarify that.
You're talking about the motion that was read? Okay. So you're saying there's a.
We're getting back, we're getting back 400.
Correction?
The change order number two.
Yeah. Okay, so you're saying in the motion, it doesn't say the word negative? Okay, so, Councilman, can you just?
Yeah.
Yeah, just, just say that's a negative 400.
Negative 400.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Bedun. Any other discussion items on that? Hearing none. Let's go ahead and take it to a vote. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is item 9F. This is with CEDD Director Jamal. FEMA-PDMC 2016 Grant Change Order Number One.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the FEMA/PDMC 2016 Grant Change Order Number One for the demolition oversight contract with Environmental Testing and Consulting Incorporated, ETC, in the amount of $1,240. In addition, authorize the mayor and the comptroller to sign the warrants and the treasurer to issue payments in the amount not to exceed $5,840 as outlined in 9F.
Support.
Okay. Motion made by Councilman Muscat, supported by Councilman Constant. Is there any discussions on that? Councilman, go ahead.
We read this real carefully. There was a lot of things that were omitted, and Director Jamal found them all, and and the amount of $1,240 more is a very slight amount for what the work is going to encompass.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate it. Any other discussions on that? Hearing none, let's take it to a vote. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is item 9G. CEDD Director Jamal FEMA/PDMC 2016 Grant Change Order Number Three.
Council Chair.
Councilman Constant.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the FEMA/PDMC 2016 Grant Change Order Number Three for the demolition contract with Environmental Testing and Consulting, Inc. in the amount of $21,220. In addition, authorize the mayor and comptroller to sign the warrants and the treasurer to issue payment in an amount not to exceed $82,279 as outlined in 9G.
Support.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Constant, supported by Councilman Ahmad. Is there any discussions on that?
Council Chair.
Councilman, go ahead.
Another kudos to Jamal, Director Jamal, for getting this approved and finding the money for us. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Jamal. Any other discussions on that? Hearing none. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is Police Chief Hart Community Notification Platform.
Council Chair.
Councilman Bedun.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the three, three-year subscription for a community notification platform with code RED on solve, in the amount of $9,850.55 per year for a total amount of $29,551.65. And authorize the mayor to sign the agreement electronically. In addition, authorize the mayor and the comptroller to sign the warrants and the treasurer to issue payment for the annual fee from the account of 101-300-818.000 as outlined in 9H.
Support. Support.
Motion made by Councilman Bedun, supported by Councilman Muscat. Is there any discussion on that?
Long overdue, thank you, Chief.
Mr. Chief, if you don't mind, come up for a sec. First of all, for those in the audience, this is an alert system in case of emergencies in our city, so I commend the chief and his administration for putting this together. I do also know I did some research on this particular program. I do know Livonia uses this particular name brand, and I'd like to have the chief, if you don't mind, before we vote on it, so that members, because this is something that's important to members of the audience. Members of the audience and residents, just give them a little abbreviation as far as what this is all about, what the advantages are to us as a city.
Yeah, so this is a communications platform that you will be able to opt into. You can choose your language for. There's an app on your smartphones that you can use.
I'm sorry, Chief.
Oh, I forgot. I'm supposed to stand, not turn my head and all that stuff. That's really hard for me.
You can turn the podium if you'd like.
So.
This time I'm the police.
Yeah. I'll ask the questions. So this is, this is a wonderful opportunity for us, really to send a one-way communication to our community members to let them know if we have a serious traffic accident that's gonna tie up roadways for a while, if we have flooding in a certain area, if we have, let's say, a fugitive that we're looking for, we can share that information, even missing children or some of our more mature adults. All those things that we could share in this platform. Our residents will be able to select the language that they receive, the text to voice and reversal of that. It's just a great opportunity for us to connect, be more transparent with our community members. I know Mr. Jamal's saving a lot of money, and I get to spend a little bit of it here for the community, but this, this really is long overdue. We looked at three different platforms. Everbridge is an excellent platform as well, but it was about twice the cost, so being mindful of our community needs and our taxpayer. So being mindful of our community needs and our taxpayer dollars. Uh, Code Red fits really well into, uh, this notification system for us. Uh, Mr. Deeb can use it to send, um, specific messages to certain areas of the city. If there's construction issues or whatever may be going on. Just so everyone knows, it's not just for the police department. It's for all city departments, uh, to utilize.
And I do know that you communicate with residents via text, via email, and via, if I'm not mistaken, regular landline. Um, but the, the question is, that, that I had when I was reading this is, does a, particularly, like, let's say myself, do I have to opt into this, or am I automatically on list to be communicated to?
Yeah, so they, um, Code Red purchases, as a lot of these notification platforms do. They purchase, uh, our information, uh, for those of us that have landlines. They purchase that from various companies. So some of that is sourced from, uh, companies and they go out and buy those numbers. But most of us now are, are, I haven't had a landline, I think, since 2010. So, uh, everything I do is on my, my phone, right, on my smartphone. So those folks will be able to opt in. So we're gonna buy the landlines and then we're gonna do a huge promotional campaign to get our residents to opt into the system and then choose the language that they wanna get these alerts into.
So on any of the platforms excluding the landline, a resident has to opt in in order to be informed about this?
That is correct.
Uh, informed of whatever particular message that's going out?
And then they'll be able to choose, you know? So, um, we wanna share the, the good word about Spirit Fest or whatever, uh, festivals that we have going on. We can, there's different levels of notifications and our residents should be able to pick which ones they wanna receive. And then, of course, now the chief gets to write a new policy on when we send those things out. Because our residents will become very wary and mad at us if I send them a message at two o'clock in the morning about a community event when they wanna be sleeping and not worried about getting phone calls or text messages.
And, and last question, is there a cost to the resident if they opt in and, and get that app on their smartphones?
No, the only cost is toss.
Okay. Counselor Chair, any other questions? Go ahead, Councilman.
Uh, thanks, Chief. You looked really good on the television the other day with an interview about the digital license plates.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
Now, does this, does this integrate with those digital license plates, the system?
Uh, this does not, um, integrate into that system. I know that there's some talk about the, uh, digital license plates maybe having Amber Alerts and some other things in there. But this will just purely be a text, a phone call, uh, or an email notification.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions for the chief?
Counselor Chair.
Go ahead.
Maybe one more. Uh, Chief, thank you for being here. So you said we're gonna have, uh, uh, the application we can download on our phones so we can get those notification. So what's a plan you're gonna implement to inform all the residents that we have, uh?
So with Mr. Ankrap and Mr. Zadikian, so we'll do a press release and we're also gonna be pushing this out heavily on our social media. Uh, and I'm sure those two gentlemen are gonna be real creative about kinda getting the word out to everybody. So.
Okay.
And any timeframe, Chief? Have this implemented or?
So, um, we get this signed before, uh, the end of the month. And I'm hoping within two to three weeks, we will have this all up and running. The sooner the better for us, you know, and for our residents as well. I know we're, we're getting into times where we're getting a lot of, it's really hard not to turn my head and talk to you. Um, we're, we'll, you know, we, we have some severe weather alerts, obviously, that have been going on. So we wanna be mindful of that and try to get this out as quickly as possible.
Thank you.
Now I could turn my head.
Okay. Thank you very much, Chief. Appreciate it. So again, item nine H, motion made by Councilman Badun, seconded by Councilman Muscat. Is there any, uh, with no additional discussions on this, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Good job, Chief. Appreciate it. Next up on the agenda is item nine I. This is with Police Chief Hart, auction of vehicles.
Counselor Chair.
Councilman Ahmad.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the auction of the following vehicles. The four highlighted vehicles are city-owned and the money collected will be returned to the federal forfeiture account. The remaining vehicles have been seized from drug asset forfeiture proceedings and the money collected will go to the state forfeiture account as outlined in nine dash one.
Support.
Okay. Um, motion made by Councilman Ahmad, supported by Councilman Conston. Is there any other discussions on that or additional discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is item nine J. This is the Tifa Administrator Roscoe, two thousand twenty-two dash two thousand twenty-three Tifa budget.
Counselor Chair.
Uh, yes, Councilman. Uh, if, if you don't mind, Councilman. For those in the audience, this particular one, we had a, like, small presentation on it just before the council meeting. And this is the time where we actually vote on it. Go ahead, Councilman.
Counselor Chair, I move that, uh, thank you, Counselor Chair. Uh, I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council concur with Tifa Board approval of the two twenty, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three Tifa budget as outlined in nine J.
Support.
Support.
Motion made by Councilman Muscat, supported by Councilwoman Breyer. Is there any other discussion on that? Or any discussion on that, I'm sorry. Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is item nine K. This is with City Clerk Senior, payment of postage for new voter ID cards and budget amendment.
Counselor Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the payment of postage for new voter ID cards from Printing Services, Inc., in the amount of five thousand one hundred and eighteen dollars and fifty-seven cents. In addition, authorize the mayor and comptroller to sign a necessary warrants and a treasurer to issue payment upon receipt from Election Contractual Service Account one oh one, one ninety, one, eight one eight point zero zero zero. Furthermore, authorize the comptroller to amend the budget as follows. From the Elections Part-Time Account, one oh one dash one ninety dash seven oh seven point one zero zero to Election, Election Contractual Service Account, one oh one dash one nine zero dash eight one eight point zero 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 in the amount of seven thousand dollars as outlined in nine K.
Support.
Motion made by Councilman Muscat, supported by Councilman Ahmad. Any discussions on that? Um, Madam Clerk, if you don't mind, if you could just give those in the audience, um, of course, I read it, but just a general outline as to what, why we are doing this.
Okay.
And I have a question, eh, eh, actually, during your presentation, if you don't mind, if you could ask why, because I know the amount was five thousand one hundred and eighteen, but you asked for the budget change of seven thousand, which is quite a bit more, so I'm just.
Okay, we have other expenses and there probably may be another budget amendment before then because we haven't even paid for the courage yet.
Okay, so you're saying it's gonna be a little bit more than the five one one eight and therefore you've?
Plus, we have outstanding bills that are associated with this.
Within that seven thousand. Okay, thank you.
So that's that one.
So can you give an abbreviation, please? Thank you.
Yes, the reason why this is being done, it'll be done every ten years and it's due to the redistricting that the state did this based on the census. So all, um, everything was redistrict. Thank goodness, our precinct, uh, boundaries this year have not changed. So we don't have to incur the change for that. We will have some districts changed, um, that will be indicated on the new voter ID cards. All voters, registered voters, will be receiving a new, um, voter ID. That's what this is for. We could not do it until now because Dearborn had a special election, which, um, they could not, the state could not follow and do our redistricting until that election was done.
Okay.
So that's why the little bit of delay, everybody, we were in the third phase of the redistricting.
Excellent. And I'd like to congratulate the residents, because what you don't know is the Madam Clerk and her department was working on this and pushed me to put this thing on the agenda kinda the last hour. But the reason being, so that a lot of the residents can get their cards in a timely manner, so that they can vote in a timely manner and not go into any type of panic. So I thank you for that.
Yeah, you're welcome. And one more thing, I will, by the end of the week, put the new districts up there. Not many changed, but some did as far as your house rep. Most of our city is in House Rep District fifteen, except for Precinct eight. But I'll have that on the, on the website and.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Because there's so many people that don't know what the new districts, including some elected officials, where they're at and who's wearing, who's voting for who. So thank you.
I have a little, I have a little cheat sheet kind of until, I, I'll have it up by the end of the week.
Can you email us? I, I, I'd love to get a copy of it.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right. So we're gonna go ahead again, um, Madam Clerk Senior, item nine K. Motion made by Councilman Muscat, seconded by Councilman Ahmad. Um, any other discussion items on that? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
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 Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is item eleven A. This is with Treasurer Lisa Hicks Clayton. Resolution approving policy for automated clearinghouse ACH arrangements and electronic transaction of funds.
That's Councilwoman Breyer.
Sorry?
I think maybe Councilwoman, you wanna go ahead?
Uh-uh, which one are we doing?
Eleven A.
Eleven A.
Okay. Let me put the glasses on, take the mask down. Okay. Uh, I, uh, wanna make the motion that the Dearborn Heights City Council, A, adopts resolution approving policy for automated clearinghouse ACH arrangements and electronic transactions of funds. Hereafter, resolution. B, acknowledges City Treasurer Lisa Hicks Clayton's presentation of the policy for automated clearinghouse ACH arrangements and electronic transactions of funds dated June seven, twenty twenty-two. Hereafter, policy. C, designate City Treasurer Lisa Hicks Clayton as the Electronic Transactions Officer, or ETO, for the city. And D, authorizes the city to utilize electronic transactions pursuant to and in compliance with the Act and the policy as outlined in eleven A.
Support.
Motion made by Councilwoman Breyer, supported by Councilman Ahmad. Any discussion on that?
Counselor Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
Uh, I know, uh, uh, our treasurer's in the, uh, on Zoom. Uh, what is this cost to the city?
All right, thank you. Um, as far as the cost, the transactions are actually less than issuing a check. So this will ultimately, or could potentially save the city money. Versus, and this would be for regular-type vendors' payments, like Wayne County, for example. They prefer an ACH payment versus a check. However, what I want, Councilwoman, uh, the policy is necessary. It's actually a requirement so we're compliant with the guidelines and the requirements of Public Act seven thirty-eight of two thousand two, um, as mentioned in the resolution. So it is a requirement that we need to have in place. But it ultimately, like I said, it will save us money over time because it costs us more money to write a check. And keep in mind, checks are less secure than your ACH payment. So there, there can be a lot of, uh, issues with fraud with checks. So this is preferred.
Thank you. And, um, Madam Treasurer, can you, um, and I know on item, I'm sorry, not item. As a part of the resolution, um, seven, B, C, and D outlined, uh, the checks and balances. But can you address that a little bit more, please? But before you do, if you could give to those members in the audience a sentence, maybe two maximum, just outlining this particular resolution. And then, for me, I'd like to know the, the, the protocols that you have in place as far as checks and balances just to make sure that, uh, and, and I'm not referencing this particular department. I'm talking about just in general, no potential in the future for funny business. Thank you.
So again, ACH is automated clearinghouse. And these are, you know, payments that we can facilitate through electronic funds transfers. It is a requirement under that Public Act that is referred to and noted in the resolution to address your items that you mentioned, seven, um, A through F. Those are your internal controls. And you can see that it's still the same, uh, procedure for requesting any payment. Starts with the comptroller's office, with the department head, attorney-in. Ensure the general ledger is not depleted. There are funds listed in the budget and remain in that line item. And then, once that is approved, we still require the mayor and the comptroller to sign, just like any warrant. It's still a warrant. An ACH payment is a warrant, so you. And once it is signed by.
Madam Treasurer, you, you cut off after you said ACH is a warrant.
I, oh, wow, that was a long time ago. Sorry. All right, so, um, I went, I was addressing the items seven, A through F. I don't know, did you hear me say anything about that?
Yes, yes.
Oh, you did. Okay. So again, that's. The, uh, mayor and comptroller sign off on that warrant. Then the treasury can make the ACH payment, the transfer, the electronic payment. So it's the same procedure that's in place already for check and balance and transparency. And then, of course, the treasurer's office provides all of the backup. We retain a copy in our office. We also send a copy with all the backups to the comptroller. And that's retained for audit purposes. And, um, that's really what section seven is all about, is internal control.
Thank you very much, Madam Treasurer. There was also another item, if you recall, um, you spoke with me after the last meeting. Uh, one of our residents, um, if you don't mind, Mr. Zohair Abdalhak, had asked a question, um, at the meeting, at the last regular city council meeting, and you contacted me. And you asked to be able to speak on this. And I let you know that during this particular time, at eleven A, I'll give you an opportunity to be able to answer his question, sentence two, maybe three, if you don't mind.
Yeah, so, um, I did call Mr. Abdalhak.
Um, Madam Treasurer, if you don't mind, for those in the audience that maybe don't remember the question, so if you could maybe repeat the question, or maybe unless, Mr. Abdalhak? You know what, I'm gonna have Mr. Abdalhak ask the question again. And I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna have you answer, if you don't mind, Mr. Abdalhak.
Really, I forgot that question.
He forgot, um, so can you repeat the question yourself, Madam Treasurer? Thank you for your honesty.
Um, I think. Yes, oh, you don't remember the question? I'm, I'm, I'm joking. But the question was related to Act three forty-five, which is our police and fire pension system and the collection that's collected on your tax roll, your summer tax roll as a millage. It is restricted funds. Um, traditionally, historically, it has gone into the general fund. And because it's restricted and it earns interest and things of that nature in the J Fund, it really needs to be separated out. And council actually gave the authorization to crew. You're gonna see on your summer tax roll coming up, uh, which is the mail the first week in July, that all of those levy millages that councils approved are all gonna be itemized out, including Act three forty-five. So they're all gonna have their own line item. You're gonna be able to see the amount that was approved by council. You're gonna be able to see how much you're paying. On the back of the bill will tell you.
You're cutting off.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm really not moving. Um, but we're breaking those out, is what I'm trying to say, and itemizing them. And when the bills are paid, the tax bills are paid, this money is separated at point of entry and put into its own restricted account. And then that way, we're, it's part of the disbursement process of every fifteen days. Um, so that, I think, was his question. The, I don't know if that was just one part. I, I believe there was a question about the, uh, the contributions for this current fiscal year. And that was made about two weeks ago. And that wasn't just Act three forty-five, police and fire pensions, but also general, uh, government retirees' pension system. That contribution's already been made as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good. Your counsel? Okay. No problem. Thank you very much, Mr. Zohair Abdalhak, and thank you very much, Madam Treasurer. Um, any additional comments or concerns on item eleven A? Okay, hearing none, motion made by Councilwoman Nancy Breyer, seconded by Councilman Ahmad. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. And one of the last items on our agenda here is new business. Uh, business license renewal, item thirteen A.
Counselor Chair.
Councilman Badun.
I move that Dearborn Heights City Council renew the business license for Connect Auto Sales LLC located at four four one three South Beach Daily. And, uh, St. Earl Carl E. Post two three two located, it's a St., I'm sorry, it's a St., forgive me.
Carl East End.
Uh, two three two located at thirteen eight five zero, military as outlined in thirteen A.
Support.
Okay, motion made by Councilman Badun, supported by, I heard it from right side, who was that? Okay, Councilman Ahmad. Uh, any discussion on that?
Counselor Chair.
Councilman Wenzel.
Um, you know, all of us here get calls all the time about, uh, people storing vehicles. Um, you know, all of us here get calls all the time about, uh, people storing vehicles on their property and in the street with dealer plates on them. That's a big issue. I just had one in my neighborhood, the guy had 12 vehicles in the driveway and in the street. And the ordinance department and the police department were quick to react, and the next day, most of them were gone. He had a couple licensed ones still in the driveway. But, um, I know it's a concern of mine and some of us up here and, um, you know, all the residents, most of the residents, that we're getting way, way too many of these car dealerships. And I know in the past, we set up moratoriums on something. I just wanted to plant the seed that I think we should look into a, uh, a study session on, you know, developing a moratorium or a limit on, uh, auto, uh, auto sales lots. A lot of the lots, a lot of them are kept clean and orderly, but the ordinance says that when you have cars in a lot, you can't double park them. That means you can move any car out of there at any time. And you drive by just about, you know, most of them, they got the cars stacked in there. And they have to, do you want that car? They have to move 10 cars to get to that car. And it's, it's, it's just an eyesore, and I think we should look into that in the study session.
Council Chair. Wait, Councilman, if you don't mind, please. So I'm gonna, I mean, if there's more to say to that, I'll, I'll allow us to speak on that during the council comments, just to be fair, because I don't want to give the amplification that it's this particular business, I don't know which business this is specifically, but we don't want to make it look like we're referencing them, to be fair, they're just trying to redo their license. So let's vote on that, and then during the comment section of council men and women, you could go ahead and address it further if you'd like, and you could comment, if that's what you're commenting on.
My, my, my comment was just that, one, sales auto connect doesn't do that, and two, I was gonna recommend the same thing, that I don't want this, you know, anybody at home watching this thinking, we're talking about this.
That's what I'm saying, just to be fair.
I'm not either.
No, I know, I know that, I know that, but that's, that's what it's gonna imply, Councilman, that's what I was concerned about. But I'm allowing you, of course, to speak on that, that's a very important item, thank you. Okay, so let's go ahead and go back to item 13A, motion made by Councilman Bedun, seconded by Councilman Ahmad. Any other discussion items on that particular one for the St. Post and Connect Auto Sales on Beach Daily? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next type is members of the public. Uh, we're gonna have comments from council members. Uh, I'm gonna ask a question of the mayor, if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor, myself, and then I'm gonna allow you, Councilman Wenzel, to further comment in regards to the car dealerships, and in case, you didn't have any other comment on it, right?
No, no, I was just...
Okay, but we'll see any other comments. Okay, so, I'm gonna bring this up, I know this has been all over the place, so Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, I'd really appreciate an update on the golf course and what's going on with that. I know we've had many conversations, I know many council members have had conversations with you, um, and I know me and you talked about you getting ahold of, um, the county in regards to Beach Daily and, and all the overgrowth. For those in the audience and on Zoom, um, you know, keep in mind, there's the golf course part, but then there's also the part from the fence, actually a little bit past the fence, up to the street, that, a lot of that is county, uh, property, it is not our property. So, and then the mayor, I know, is speaking with people from the county there. Can you give us an update on the golf course and where it's going, what's going on, when it likely will be opened, and most importantly, what is the status on the contract?
Okay, so today we had a meeting, again...
If you don't mind.
It's on, it's on, actually, can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, so we had a meeting today, uh, and it was very positive. We had, uh, come up with, uh, with, uh, the best we can get for the golf course. I know the, both attorneys, our attorney, Mr. Miyaki, and their, and his attorney, um, they, they have to talk probably about a few items, minor items, then, uh, we're targeting to have it on the agenda at the next council meeting.
Okay, so for those in the audience, the next council meeting would be a voting meeting, so that would not be the next Tuesday, Tuesday after that, so two weeks from now, the fourth Tuesday of the month.
Yes, so we, we will probably, more than likely, put on the agenda for your approval next Tuesday, uh, so then you guys can vote on, on the fourth weekend, or fourth Tuesday, sorry. And the other thing is for the, uh, the Wayne County property, I, I did have contact with DPS from Wayne County, they are gonna send a team or somebody to go look at it tomorrow and possibly more that area. So I did talk to one of their, the directors, and they're supposed to send somebody up there to look at it tomorrow. And I will follow up on it like midday tomorrow, make sure that it gets done. So that's gonna be the area on Beach Daily between Joy Road and Morn area.
And, um, I know I've mentioned this before, but I'll mention it again, first I'll speak on behalf of myself individually. It is a golf course, and we are pursuing and continuing to pursue and continuing to move in the direction of being a golf course, it is not being built on.
Well, again...
Those in the, in, on, on the council, anybody on the council aware of it being anything but a golf course? Okay? Mr. Mayor, anything on the horizon of it being anything else but a golf course where people can golf with balls and hit...
Golf balls.
Yeah, golf balls.
Not in this lifetime, it's gonna be a golf course, and that's one of the things that it's taken a little bit longer to come up with a contract, just want to make sure that we have, again, as we stated before, and I've actually said it to few departments, I want a world-class everything in the city, you know, uh, one of them is a world-class golf course. And, uh, I think we have, we come up with a good contract, and you guys will see that at the next council meeting, and it will be just a golf course, and again, a banquet, and, you know, the concessionaire is talking about putting a great restaurant downstairs or a sports bar, and it's gonna be very nice for the residents to come in and, you know, have a nice meal, you know, during the day instead of having it be shut down like it's...
And, and I'm only bringing it up because honestly, I, I, you know, I, people call me all the time, you know, what are you guys doing with it? We, nobody's letting it go so it could become something else. It is a, I don't know, I've said it in plain English like good, many a times, I know the mayor's said it.
Council Chair.
It is a golf course.
It is a golf course, and there's some few people, uh, again, I don't want to get into the part, you know, I might keep it positive here, I don't appreciate certain people misleading the residents or misleading the public. It is a golf course, and it's gonna be a golf course, and it's gonna be a world-class golf course. I can guarantee you that. This is what we're working towards. We're gonna do everything we can to make sure it's a good golf course and not an embarrassment that we were left with.
We should make an ad that says it's staying a golf course, it's staying a golf course, that everybody realizes.
Council Chair. Right on the sign.
It's at five council meetings, it's gonna stay a golf course, Council Chair, just make an ad.
No, I, I know I've said it many times, but I just want to make sure, you know, the, it's clear, that's all we are moving forward to, towards a golf course.
Can, uh, can you or the mayor or someone else that's talking about this, can you, uh, tell us that when you say it's gonna, we're not gonna develop the golf course, you're talking about all 36 holes, correct?
I, I, I'm, I'm not the concessionaire.
That's what we're talking, the golf course is all 36 holes.
It's, it's gonna be a golf course, and one of the things, Wayne County is looking at some of that, like for the, the wet areas, so we are gonna be discussing this with, uh, with Wayne County, and I know the city engineer's been talking about, we've been talking about this for months, uh, because of the residents in that area getting flooded, so we are looking at to see the area that is flooded, to see if we can deviate some water to it. Again, we need a study on it, and we are working on a study at the same time to make sure that, you know, our residents in the area is not gonna flood, and to make sure that the golf course can be played and it's not gonna be shut down when it's raining, like last year, it was shut down a lot because of the rain.
It'll be like a retention basis.
Excuse me.
Sorry.
Like a retention basis?
Yeah, but again, we have to talk to the county.
So if, 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 uh, you know, I, I was, when everybody says the golf course, everyone assumed the 36-hole golf course, right? I mean, no one said half the golf course. So that's a, that's a new, new revelation there. In the event that, say, you know, against my, against my, my judgment, you know, I want to keep 36 holes, but in the event something happens where they turn it into an 18-hole golf course, so the, the previous 18 holes that are no longer a golf course, they're open for anything, because all the comments are, we're not gonna develop on the golf course. So now we got this land that's vacant, it's not a golf course anymore, it used to be, so we can do whatever, anything we want on there.
No, 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 I, I, as I said, you can't build, it's wet land, you can't build anything on a council, and you know more than anybody, okay? We've been discussing this for years. They're, they're not gonna allow us to build anything. As you know, Eagle will never allow you to do anything like that in wet land, okay? I mean, you should know more than anybody.
That's good to hear, thank you.
You were on the watershed commission.
I just wanted to hear that, you know, that's why...
And I can tell you, it's like I said before, we gotta take care of the residents. If the residents are flooded downstream, we're gonna do everything we can that the residents are not flooded. And I've, I've been listening to a lot of residents' concerns, I've been getting, getting a lot of calls from neighbors in that area. So we have to make sure we are engaged with Eagle, with the state, and also with the county to make sure that our residents are not flooded downstream. Okay, that's my objective.
Are there any plans to keep it a 36-hole golf course?
Well, we gotta talk to the county to see, like I said, you know, I don't know how many times I have to repeat myself, Councilman, we have to talk to the state and the county to make sure that we, if, if we need to put a retention basin in one of the holes or whatever, we need, we need to assess that. And again, we, you know, Eagle's been engaged with us with several discussions, they were here at the city hall about two weeks ago, so we need to have a further discussion on this. But it is gonna be a golf course, and there's gonna be no buildings on it whatsoever, no homes, not even a shed, you know, shed, other than the two bathrooms that we're thinking about rebuilding on, on the top.
Yeah, it'd be, it'd be a shame to lose any of the holes, that was a world, a world-renowned golf designer designed it, all 36 holes. And like I said in my, one of my emails, that, you know, 36-hole golf course, you can hold two golf outings at one time on that, on that. Not too many golf courses, there's hardly any golf courses in this half of Michigan that have 36 public holes. So we should do everything we can to maintain, if possible, all 36 holes. We've gone without a retention basin, maybe we could do something else. It floods anyway, that's what it's there for, so I, I don't know about building a basin, you'd have to, it'd be pretty expensive. I don't know, maybe not, maybe it's cheap. But anyway, I just wanted to, you know, I had people saying, what do they mean, do they mean all 36 holes? And they say houses, does that mean houses, any multi-dwelling, multifamily dwellings, uh, apartment complexes, or condominiums? When somebody says houses, that encompasses everything, right? Houses?
Okay, so again, once the contract's complete, completed as far as negotiations between the administration and the Esau Brothers LLC, then that contract comes to us, and whatever's agreed upon, we as a body would be able to vote on it. But is there anything on the horizon that I'm aware of? No, not myself.
I've heard, uh, in an email, you said, said something about LLC, that they're gonna become a full liability corporation, the ones that operate the golf course, right? Not an LLC?
As far as I know, it's called Esau Brothers LLC.
Yeah, it's a, an appropriate corporate entity to do business.
Limited liability?
It could be an LLC, it could be an Inc., it could be...
S corp.
S, yeah, I mean, it would be unusual if it's an S corp, but, um, but, you know, the fact that it's an LLC, it does not disqualify it from doing business, or it doesn't suggest anything about the size of it.
Okay, thank you, thanks.
You all set, Councilman?
Thanks, thank you.
Okay, but...
Council Chair, thank you so much, and this is just on public comments right now, or is this...
Yes.
Great, great, so I just have a couple things to say. One, I just want to put for the record, that I've never heard, and, and I know I've had a conversation with you, I know I've had a conversation with you, I've never heard of anything being built, uh, to the councilmen, I want you to know, I, I, from what I'm being told, it's staying a golf course.
Um, yeah.
But, you know, that's...
Could be a nine-hole golf course.
I, I, I mean, I've, I don't know. My second thing here that I just want to bring up, guys, uh, there was a passing in the community recently, her name is Mesa Farhat, uh, she was giving birth to her newborn baby. Minutes later, she was rushed over into another room and she passed away, so I just wanted to give a moment of silence for the Farhat family who reside here in Dearborn Heights, if that's okay. Thank you, Council Chair, and then, you know, this, this was, uh, it's very hard, you know, being a, a new father, uh, seeing my wife going through labor, I can only imagine what the family's going through. I know that the baby is actually, the, the body's being buried in Lebanon, and our Rashida Talib, our congresswoman, was able to assist this family in allowing the newborn to actually get her passport expedited overnight, so thank you to Rashida Talib, our congresswoman, that, that was amazing. Uh, the family actually reached out to me, I connected them over with the Rashida and her team and her staff did a phenomenal job, for real. Thank you to that. Uh, my next thing is, there's going to be a new podcast coming to the community, it's gonna be called the Mo and Amity Show, so, uh, it's gonna be light, it's gonna be exciting, I think it's gonna be, uh, you know, filled of energy. The Amity Foundation works hand in hand with this community, both Dearborn and Dearborn Heights, where they're helping out families day in and day out. Um, so I just wanted to make that a little announcement, and also, there's a new custo co coming to Dearborn Heights, which I have, uh, you know, financial interest in, and that should be coming, hopefully, July 1st. All your friend, uh, friendly ice cream will be there.
Okay, get advertisement.
Okay, great, we're not gonna talk about the ice cream, so we'll just stop there. I thought it was only political things that you weren't allowed to advertise.
Unless you're saying you're gonna give free ice cream to everybody.
Yeah. Free ice cream to everybody, sure. Um, and then, uh, one more kudos over to, um, you know, our Parks and Recreation Director doing a phenomenal job at the Spirit Festival. Um, it, it was really, really amazing, it was nice to see, you know, food like shawarma being there from Billy Aiman, uh, I know Elise Porches did high hamburgers and hot dogs, uh, and, and just being accessible to being halal. And, you know, this is, it was very new, first time here at the festival, and thank you so much for that, you did a great job, for real. Stuts at the top, and everybody did a good job there. And then just with my closing remarks here, Council Chair, uh, you know, I know the police chief just gave a great seminar last Thursday, uh, that was not a city-related, it was done by privately, and he ended it with a, a great quote, and it said, "We're gonna continue to lead our city with love." Uh, and I want you to know, it resonated with me, it stuck with me, and Chief, I appreciate that, because, uh, the new slogan at the Mo and Amity Show is gonna be "Leading with Love." Uh, so I appreciate that, I'd like to see the city lead in love, I'd like to see this department, you know, police department to lead in love, our fire department to lead in love, this administration to lead with love, and obviously, my entire, uh, council members and colleagues, as well as the, uh, the amazing clerk over here, to continue to lead with love. So thank you for that, I'm gonna use that often. I'll use the rest of my time, Council Chair.
Thank you.
Council Chair. Councilman Wenzel, you want to finish off, go ahead.
Yeah, um, I was commenting on the mayor's comments there earlier, but, uh, first of all, for my official, uh, comments from, uh, city council members, um, I'll give every, tell every, all the fathers out there, Happy Father's Day this weekend, you know, good job keeping this world populated. But we couldn't do it without the mothers, though, too, so, you know. And, uh, um, my, uh, my hand goes off to, uh, Director Lauren Sell, I'm not gonna say anything, I'm sure she's got some things to say about some rec, some records being broke at the Spirit Festival. And, um, you know, speaking of directors, our, our directors are amazing, you know, all the directors here, we got Director Jamal, I mean, Director Deve saving the, the city so much money, it's phenomenal, you know, Mike McCaffrey, Mike, Mike Blackburn, all, all, my Director Comrade, all the, all the directors, you know, they're doing a, a great job, fantastic job. And, um, you know, uh, I'm not gonna steal, uh, Leslie Winslet's seat, I'm sure she's gonna speak about, uh, activities coming on this weekend, no? Be better now, because I didn't copy them all down, so you got your... I was gonna be out of town this weekend, so now I'm not, so, which brings me to my next thing, you know, uh, I always talk about families, these activities coming up this weekend would be a great opportunity, get your families involved, go, you know, with your, go with the family, after, you know, after services, you take your family out to these different things. I took my family for several days at the Spirit Festival, oh my gosh, I, I slept for three days afterward chasing them guys around, and they had a great, 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 great time, you know, um. Now, um, speaking of, uh, this, um, meeting we have, a study session this coming Tuesday, it's about a resolution that I, I, uh, put forth to the city council about the amendment to the, uh, city charter to let the residents decide on what they want to do with the golf course, not, you know, let, let them... And at this meeting, we're gonna take some language that was, uh, developed by the Gary Miyaki, and, and tweak and add our own things that we want on there. And there's gonna be a couple council members that aren't gonna be here, so I'm urging them to write down what they, what they would like on this, as far as, you know, development, what, what is, what is considered development on the golf course, or, you know, what, different things, let everyone have their input. The residents either come to the, the meeting, or get ahold of someone on city council, someone else with your opinion on what you want to do, and we need to get this done quick, because, even though there is a recommendation that this be done, you know, by the beginning of even though there is a recommendation that this be done, you know, by the beginning of June, it still can be submitted to the state for approval. There's not an actual time limit, there's a recommendation. They strongly recommend so. If I spoke with someone and they said they've seen this pass very quickly a few times in the past, so if it's not too complicated, it can still get through and get on the ballot. It's possible for this year. And like I said, the families, everybody, be with your families, eat your meals with your families, go to services with your families. And God bless everyone, God bless Dearborn Heights.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, so just one more item that I had in addition to the mayor. I received a letter in my mailbox from Corporal John Kelly. And I would be remiss if I don't mention this. I just want to take this opportunity to, one of the officers, one of our officers, you know, gave their lives for us here in Dearborn Heights. Well, I'm talking about the specific letter. And this is Jason Anthony Mikowski. And I knew they do different commemorations for him at St. Hedwig. I went to it last year. And I just want to take, just to audience, he unfortunately was killed in the line of duty. He's got a son, I think it was one or two sons, two sons. Lives here in Dearborn Heights, they live here in Dearborn Heights. So I'd like to just take just a quick moment of silence for our officer, Jason Anthony Mikowski, please. Thank you, God rest his soul. Okay, next up is Councilman Musket and then Councilman Ahmad.
First, I wanna say, we've said this before to all the residents. When you have an issue in the city with any, any problems, if you think that you're not getting either treated properly as far as, you know, when you call someone, if you don't see an action being done right away, please call the proper departments first, before you call city council people. It would be good for that to be on the record before city council gets involved with anything. I know a lot of people get on social media and say, "This is happening, this is happening." And then you say, "Have you called this department?" They'll say, "Why should I? Because nothing happens." Well, they can't be there to notice all this. So please call the property departments. If you don't see any action, then I guess you can call city council people next. Again, trash pickup. I've traveled the city, and I see a lot of people just throwing their trash out haphazardly all over the place, not bundling up their things properly. They pull out a big bush, they just stick it on the curb. It's not gonna get picked up that way. Please, you know, have some sort of pride in yourself and help the workers out. Bundle your trash properly, set it out there neatly. Carpet should be no more than four feet long, not six, eight, and weigh a hundred pounds, especially when it gets wet. The, I've noticed that more and more people are starting now to clean up their properties. Been hammering them, so now I'm gonna tip my cap out to them and tell them they're doing a better job. And as far as the unsighting list of the bushes along Warren Avenue, this has always been a Wayne County problem. And this problem has existed forever. I've called our former council, our county commissioners, had them come out, tried to get it resolved, but if we don't stay on them, they just don't cut it. So I think once a year, or twice a year, or three times a year, we need to kind of remind them, hey, we're still here, and we need that cut. And one other thing is, I'd like to see Mr. Conrad. He's, I think he's gone now, but the city hall property does not look very good. The weeds, we had a suggestion from our reporter here that maybe we can use some volunteer help from the National Honor Societies, from our high schools, to come and help out here, spruce up the property a little bit. I think that would be a great idea because the weeds are starting to overtake our property. And we can't, you know, look at our residents and say, "Keep up your property" if we're not keeping up our own. So that's my thing for today, and God bless everybody. And happy Father's Day. Yeah, that, this, you know, Mother's Day and Father's Day are the two holidays where the husband cooks for the mother and for himself. So I think maybe we move Mother's Day to, on the snowiest day of the year, so we don't have to barbecue.
First, Father's Day.
Thank you.
Thank you, council chair. First of all, I would like to wish everybody, today is Flag Day, so happy Flag Day. Also, a couple days ago was the Women's Veteran Recognition Day. So I would like to recognize and salute all the women veterans in our community and across the nation. Also, great job, Director Lawrence L. Your department and police department and the fire department on an excellent job on the festival. Third, we have a set date for the Wayne County Directors to be meeting with our directors, which is at the end of the month. So I want to thank the administration for taking care of this. So looking forward for that meeting. Fifth, for the contract regarding the golf course, if it possibly, if we can ask the mayor, if we can have enough time, at least to review the contract before we go on it, that would be really great. Last but not least, over the weekend, I saw a post on Facebook that a twelve-year-old kid, whose bike, he's a visually impaired kid, and his bike was stolen. So I reached out to a local nonprofit, which they reached out to Walmart Dearborn. So I want to thank Walmart Dearborn for them donating their bike. And also, I want to thank John the Deacon from the Rotary Crop, where he donated a helmet for the kid. And it was really nice from them to do that, so. And happy Father's Day, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, council chair. I, too, want to wish all the fathers in Dearborn Heights and everyone happy Father's Day, including my ninety-six-year-old father. The golf course, you know, we have a goal. The prior operator left the golf course, left a lot of damage. It has to be repaired. The building has to be repaired. I know that in Taylor, they have a retention pond. They actually have it stocked with fish for their golf course, and it works great. I mean, it's just a good use of the land, and that's something that we need to look into. Just to echo what our council chair has said and everyone has said, there's, we have to work together, get the golf course open back up again and in business. There's residents that were going out and helping cut the grass, which I think is great. But there's no discussion to do anything than other than get the golf course open and operated. Then my good friend, Councilman Musket, said that he wanted to find out what residents can do if they have to get rid of hazardous waste. I know if there's oil, people have, like, they change their oil. They can go to O'Reilly's or Autozone or anywhere, and they'll take the recycled oil. Batteries, I know they have receptacles in front of the senior centers and some of the other city buildings. But having said that, to get rid of hazardous waste, what does a resident need?
Yeah, I knew Wayne County was having something, but I just didn't know what it was. Or somebody called me today, excuse me, council chair. And so I asked Robert Townsend to do this for me. I knew Wayne County was gonna do something, but I didn't have the information because the resident called DPW, and they didn't know what to tell them. So if you could...
Wayne County is gonna have a hazardous waste disposal collection on July 9th from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. They'll take household paints, floor wax, pharmaceutical waste, antifreeze, motor oil, gasoline, car batteries, fire extinguishers, mercury thermometers, computers, e-waste, cell phones. It's gonna be at the Henry Ford College, 5101 Evergreen Road in Dearborn on July 9th from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. So thank you, Councilwoman Brier.
Thank you, Councilman Townsend and Councilwoman Brier for helping me with my memory.
Just a quick comment. We're not at perfection yet, but I want to commend Priority Waste. Drastically improved this week versus previous weeks. Going in the right direction. We're not there yet, we're not there yet. We don't have a big smile on our faces, but definitely going in the right direction. They added four additional trucks. They're totally focused on our city. And again, just going in the upward direction, and hopefully, we get there.
Residents have to help by stacking their trash out there properly and not just haphazardly throw it out there. It just, it, first of all, blows everywhere, and it just looks so unsightly. And people that pick that trash up are not subhuman beings. They're workers like everybody else, okay? They work hard, just like we do. Thank you.
Council chair, I will say that I received very little amount of complaints this week.
Same here.
And my trash was actually picked up on time. You know, it was gone out of the way, and I said, "I see." And so I actually messaged Paul, and I let Paul know that, hey, you're doing a good job. I appreciate that. He said, "Well, we're trying." So he told me he had more trucks out there, and I'll tell you, I probably had one or two, and I sent it to him, and he said, "You know what?" They made, it was like one cone or can. It wasn't an actual neighborhood, which happens, happens in everywhere. So I will say that, yeah, you know what, things have gotten better, and I'm glad.
Thank you. Councilman Wentz, I know you had a comment you wanted to make in regards to the car dealerships.
Oh, I basically said what I wanted to do. We should look into a study session on it.
Okay. Well, this will all be encompassed as a part of our master plan that Mr. Ali Deve is working on. So that and many other things will be encompassed, and it'll show us which direction we're going as a city, including used car dealerships.
Yeah, you know, council chair, I...
And not to mention, I'm sorry if I may interrupt for a sec, not to mention the thing that the city administration's working on on the Van Born corridor between us and Taylor. And that encompasses that in watching the aesthetics of the car dealerships in restaurants and theaters, et cetera.
Yeah, well, Taylor has a really strict ordinance under used car lots. I mean, you hardly see any in Taylor, very few. You have to be associated with an actual franchise dealer. But maybe we should look into our ordinance, along with this used car lot deal, our ordinance department, and see if we can streamline it or revamp it where they have more authority. Because the way it's caught up in the court system now, just a minor infraction like grass, I mean, could take six months to be resolved. Actually, if the people, getting the ticket, dispute it, and then it's, you know, it ties up the court system. I mean, we should look into something like, you know, hey, they have the authority. You give them a warning one week, it's not done. We come in with a contractor and do it, and put it on their taxes, or something like that. You know, we need to look at, make them have more authority instead of just giving them chance after chance. Because there's so many, I'm sure you've got calls, and you out there have gotten them, where there's been an issue going on for years, literally years. And I know several of them. So we need to maybe look into that also.
Some administration could look at. Okay, with no other announcements from council members, any announcements for...
Announcement.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay, it is that time. The fourth Wednesday of the month, which is Wednesday, 6:22, the E Course Creek Commission will be meeting at 6:00 p.m. at 3335 South Beach Daily. And then on Thursday, 6:23, the South Dearborn Heights Civic Association will have their meeting on Thursday at 7:00 p.m., same location. You're all invited.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman. Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and go to announcements from City Hall. Mayor?
So, yeah, one of the things, so, been in the office for over a year, you know, been talking to a lot of residents. And one of the biggest things that our ordinance is, including directors, been bringing some stuff to my attention, are a lot of our ordinances, they're obsolete. You know, they're, you know, they're back to the, some of them back to the sixties. And so we're looking at, one of the things we're discussing to see if we can put in some ordinances and, or even amend a lot of the ordinances that we have. We've passed some of the directors, a couple of the directors actually go and look at best practices, you know, in other cities. And to see what we have, like, if there's an ordinance, best practice, we can bring it and look at it. One of them, I know Mr. Miyaki is looking at currently, that we'll probably put on agenda in probably the next month or so. So that's something, you know, we're looking at ordinances, you know. And we do have to obviously clean up our cities. We do have to have better communication with a lot of residents. You know, a lot of residents are not aware of some of the ordinances. So one of the things, we're gonna try to put that in the newsletters that we do twice a year. That's one. The other thing I wanted to talk about is, I mean, obviously, Spirit Festival, we already talked about it. It was a big hit, you know, we had close to 5,000 people on Saturday. Thank you, the director, Kim, you know, did an amazing job. And also, DPW did a lot of work in there for setup. The fire department, and also the police department. It was, it was a big task, and they did an amazing job to keep the peace, you know, with that many, with that many people here in just a small corner of the city. Also, this, you know, it is Juneteenth. And so one of the things today, I had a meeting today with Ramulus Mayor, you know. So one of the great things, you know, about, I mean, the county, is we have several meetings with different mayors and supervisors from the cities. So we can discuss, you know, like, some things, best practices, you know, things to bring to our city, what they can use or what we can use. So this is something big the county's actually pushing, you know, with the meetings. You know, we do meet twice a month, and so you get a chance to network with a lot of officials, especially like with the E Course Creek, you know, I know that's a huge issue. So there's something I can't talk about yet, you know, because it's an initiative. It's gonna be positive if it goes through. And it's gonna be announced, you know, once it's confirmed. You know, we're gonna work with a lot of cities who are, actually touch the E Course Creek. You know, it's gonna be a huge initiative, and it's gonna be very positive to the city of Dearborn Heights. You know, more to come on that, once we get concrete data and also confirmation from both the county and also the state. So with Juneteenth, one of the things, I was talking to the mayor of Ramulus today, and he was really interested. He said, "Wow, you guys do," including some council members from Ramulus, they were like very impressed that we have that Juneteenth, you know, in Dearborn Heights. So I'm sorry, Leslie, I gave them your information. They're gonna get ahold of you. I told them there's a gala on Friday evening. I don't know if there are seats available yet, but I mean, still. So I told them to get ahold of you. And a lot of Ramulus elected officials will be there on Sunday. So I want, you know, the residents to come and show support on Sunday. And, you know, just, you know, just be there with, like, the whole community be together, and just something great for the city. I'm looking forward to it, you know, on Sunday. And like I said, there's a lot of, a lot of elected officials from outside the city that, who are not, you know, they don't have Juneteenth, you know, in their city. They're gonna come and celebrate that in our city this Sunday. And thank you, Leslie Batania, for putting that on. Appreciate it.
And I'd like to ask, I'm sorry, add in regards to the E Course Creek situation. As you are aware, Mr. Mayor, myself and the mayor had a meeting with our lieutenant governor, and both of us spoke with the lieutenant governor in regards to this, making sure that the state is keeping the E Course Creek on their radar because as both of us, when we spoke with them, to the point where they almost had to shut us up because we kept speaking to them about it, to make sure this is gonna continue to be on the state's radar. Because as a lot of you guys are aware, you know, this is something that we need state, county, and federal help in order to be able to solve it. But I commend the mayor for having that conversation with the lieutenant governor and keeping it on their radar.
And council chair, I mean, it was, that was a very positive meeting. I did talk to somebody from the state afterwards, you know, from some of their concerns because obviously it was a small meeting, you know, couldn't answer a lot of the questions. One of the biggest issues that I brought up is, you know, with Dua, you know, there was a city, again, not to mention its name, but they haven't been paying their bills. So it put a burden on a lot of the cities, you know, around, Dearborn Heights was one of them. So that was one of the discussions, so there's something positive about that. Also, Dua with the wastewater treatment plant, you know, there's a huge investment that is gonna be imposed on the residents, you know, for it's a huge undertaking, a project that they have to replace some, a lot of pumps, big pumps that tuck in like millions of dollars. So we are gonna try to get the state to engage, you know, to spend some of their ARPA money because that's gonna be an additional cost on the city of Dearborn Heights residents. So we're trying to make sure that we minimize that, you know. So we are engaged with the state to see what they can do to help us with that through their ARPA money. And as you mentioned, the E Course Creek, you know, we've been having a lot of meetings, you know, a lot of cities upstream. One of the biggest issues, they built a lot of infrastructure upstream. So there's like no more farmlands. A lot of the water's flowing to us, you know, we're like at the bottom, you know. So a lot of water comes to us, and it's not really being absorbed in the farms that they had, you know, upstream. So that's something we're still discussing with the state to make sure all the communities are involved to help, you know, one another, to make sure that we're not gonna get affected, you know, by that. to make sure that we're not gonna get affected, you know, by the next flood as we did last year.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Anybody else from administration have any, um, announcements?
Hello, Council Chair and Mayor. Just wanted to announce that our Dearborn Heights Summer Jamboree is right around the corner. Our opening celebration will be Friday, June 24th from 1:00 to 3:00 PM at Carolyn Kennedy Library. And at JFK, our opening celebration drive will be through, or, I'm sorry, our opening celebration drive thru will be Saturday, June 25th from 1:00 to 3:00 PM. Join us for crafts, games and snacks for adults and children of all ages. Uh, you can also sign up for activity boxes on our website, www.dhcl.mishlibrary.org. I can do that through June 24th. Um, and so far we're at about a thousand signups, so keep them coming. Uh, that's all for now. Thanks for your time and see you at the library. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Action Jackson. Go ahead.
Yes, um, last weekend, as everybody knows, we had the 34th Annual Spirit Festival, which was a humongous, um, success sponsored by Antonio's Restaurant. We broke all kinds of records. Thursday night, and, and this is the revenue for the, uh, ride company alone, it's not our percentage. Uh, Thursday night, they went over 47,000, which we've never done. Saturday night, we were over 108,000. And Sunday, we were over 97,000. This is revenue from just the, not our revenue, but the, uh, ride company revenue. In total, though, we were just under 300,000 for the ride company revenue, which was amazing. Never has been done before. Our percentage was 25%, so we took in almost, uh, $76,000.
Wow, good job.
Yeah. Our expenses were around 34,000. And with all of our other, uh, revenue, we had sponsorships, we had senior Jubilee food vendors, specialty vendors, the alcohol vendor, and then we also had, uh, Veterans Table sponsors. The total revenue for us came to $87,000. So our actual net was $53,690.07. But those are like, they're not super solid numbers, but they're pretty close.
Why don't we throw a festival every weekend?
I know, right? My pile of papers are this tall, so I don't think so. I still don't have my voice back either.
Yeah. Yeah, I remember I, I, I called to speak with you the next morning and I, and I said, hello Director. He said, hello.
Yeah, it's like, yeah, what's the matter?
Uh, but just to give people a perspective, uh, typically during these particular festivals, like the net to the city is like 5,000 and-
That's about the most it's been for the cities.
Give you a perspective as to how much-
We bas- basically went from a revenue of, of the most, cause I, I have been here 35 years. The most that was ever made prior to this in one year was like 5,000. So we went from 5,000 to $53,690, which is-
See your point, watch out.
Well, I don't know about that, but, um, Thursday night was a big hit from what we did and the food vendors were a huge hit. Every single night, the food vendors ran out of food. We ran out of food early on Sunday, too. So, um, with that being said, the attendance was really, really good, which really kinda was a burden on everybody, including the police department who definitely helped out. We do have to do some tweaking and some, you know, shaping to, uh, do some other things to make it more secure and more safe. Um, we've made a list of things that we need to, uh, change for next year. But, um, I have several, uh, departments to thank. First and foremost, my Parks and Recreation staff, they had to live with me for a few months right before the event and, um, all the stuff that we had to get done. Definitely the Building and Maintenance Department who actually helped out tremendously and, um, did a really good job on cleanup, uh, setup and living with me also. I, I know most of you know that I'm pretty focused on getting the task done and that's pretty much what I'm geared to do. So that's all I'm thinking of, so I'm grateful that they've been able to put up with me. The fire department as well, they did the, um, you know, the emergency tent. Um, I think I'm aware of maybe one person, um, that, you know, almost passed out from the heat. But, uh, other than that, everything went well. The big thing, um, that I would like to thank is the sponsors. We did really well on the sponsors this year. First and foremost, Antonio's Restaurant, um, they were wonderful. They, um- Just a, a note, I will be coming back to City Council for, uh, approval for, uh, an RFP to go out for fireworks for our August concert. Antonio's has committed $10,000 to go towards that event. So we are going to end the summer with a Dearborn Heights Summer Blast in combination with celebrating the 100th, uh, anniversary of the Warren Valley Golf Course with fireworks, Phoenix Theory, um, we've got blowups, we're gonna have all kinds of things. It's gonna be a wonderful end of the, this summer event, so we're all looking forward to that.
I'm excited for that, I swear.
I'm sorry?
I'm excited for that.
Oh, it's, it's gonna be really nice, but, you know, we don't want the summer to go too fast. We've got June coming up, which we've got 50 amp views, um, from, uh, 6:30 to 10:00 PM. We're gonna have, uh, the kids train, actually parents train too, cause we have a lot of parents that ride it. But, uh, they enjoy that, stilt walker, face painter, kids games.
The date is what?
Uh, June 30th from 6:30 to 10:00 and that's 50 amp views. And it's at Warren Valley Golf Course, so it's gonna be a really, really nice event. And no, Tom, I don't think you're gonna have to hold the light. I hope not. So then we've also got, coming up in July, um, we've got, um, another band, uh, a band that we're, we're coming up. It's coming up from Ohio. It's a really good band. It's, um, uh, Parrots of the Caribbean and it's a Jimmy Buffett tribute band. They're very, very good. So we are going to have a Margaritaville like no tomorrow, that night. So we're gonna even have a little kids tiki bar. Of course, it's gonna be non-alcoholic. And, um, we've got all kinds of things that night as well. And everybody's encouraged to wear their Hawaiian shirts. We have, June 30th, I didn't mention this, but we have a motorcycle show that night. And then also for, uh, the July concert, we're doing a classic car show. Last year, we did the classic car show and we actually ended up with probably, I don't know, 15, 20 cars. We're hoping for a lot more this year. Um, I'm very excited to work with the new contractor at Warren Valley. He and I have been talking a lot and, and we might be doing some additional new events that, you know, we don't have on our schedule yet. So that's kind of what we've got coming up. That's the success that we had at Spirit Festival and hopefully in another month, I'll have my voice back.
Council Chair?
I just wanna say that, uh, her selection of entertainment for the Spirit Festival was outstanding. It was, everybody enjoyed it, had a really good time. Especially on that Friday night where everyone had to go underneath the tent when it started raining. That place was packed and jamming. It was great.
Do we know how many people attended the festival?
Director?
Do we know how many people attended the festival over the week?
I don't have any idea, but I do know that you couldn't walk through the midway.
Especially Saturday.
Yeah, he was saying they were under the tent, but most of the time, the whole entire weekend, we couldn't even, um, even Thursday night, you'd go out where the rides were, you couldn't walk through it, it was so jam packed.
Might be able to tell, there's a video that's gonna be playing, an hour and a half video of, um, the fire department beating the police department. So while watching it, maybe we'll be able to tell. We'll, we'll be playing that in a little bit. Go ahead, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. That's a tough act to follow.
I heard the umpires were paid off.
We're not supposed to tell you to give anybody a ticket, but I think you can.
Okay, I'm gonna shift gears on you. It's election season.
Yeah, please. Yeah, get me out of here.
And I would like to thank all of the residents, the registered voters, um, here in Dearborn Heights for their patience with the redistricting and the delay. I'd like to let you know that last Thursday, about 10,000, a little over 10,000 absentee ballot applications were mailed to our permanent, um, AV members. And thank you to those that have returned them already. The ballots, the bulk mailing is scheduled to go out next Thursday, June 30th, so keep them coming in. We have been very busy in our office. If, if you need one, come and get an application and fill it out and we'll, it'll save the city money by doing the bulk mailing instead of putting it through our machine. So that's June 23rd, they'll be mailed. One, um, thing I did wanna mention is for Precinct 20, that, um, precinct location has changed. It was at St. John the Baptist Church. It, um, I think it was about two years ago, maybe a year and a half ago, they closed the church. They have been keeping it open for us, but this, this year we did change. And thank you to Director McCaffrey for opening up the John F. Kennedy Junior Library. That's where the precinct will be this year and going forward. And then shortly after that, I'm going to deliver as soon as that check is issued for the postage for the voter ID cards. I will take that down to PSI and they'll get on it and mail it out for us. Okay? And I will put the new districts up on, um, on the website and probably touch base with John Zadikian so he can put it on Facebook. Okay?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Appreciate it.
Leslie Wenzel, on behalf of the Community and Cultural Relations Commission, thanks to Tom Wenzel. Appreciate you. So, um, I thought you guys wouldn't have wanted me to do a reminder cause I've only came here for the last three months, every single meeting and told you about Juneteenth. But it's finally here, it's this weekend. So, uh, first say happy Pride Month and happy Juneteenth, before I forget to say it. Um, on Friday, we are having the Juneteenth Gala at Henry Ford College in the Welcome Center from 5:30 to 8:30 PM. The tickets are not on, on sale anymore, but you can contact anybody on the commission, um, for tickets and then we can manually, um, enter those. So that would be Councilman Baydun and then Councilman Abdullah, um, that you can contact. Then, um, on Saturday, we are going to support Dearborn's Juneteenth Celebration by walking in their parade. Uh, that will be on Michigan Avenue. If you'd like to walk with us, you need to be at Art Space in Dearborn at 8:45 in the morning. Um, that's expected to end by 11:30. It is a mile long, so if you're bringing children, I would recommend having them on bikes or skates, uh, hoverboard or something like that. That's what my kids will be on. Then last but not least, it's the actual Dearborn Heights Celebration, which is at, at the Richard A. Young Center. And it is a festival, we're gonna have zip line, bounce houses, shout out to Elite Sports and Mr. Mackey. I don't know if he's in here, um, but thank you for donating additional bounce houses to this event. Uh, that is at the Richard A. Young Center on Sunday, which is also Father's Day. Happy Father's Day, everybody. And, um, it's from 1:00 PM to 4:00 PM. I don't think I missed anything, so that's it for me.
Thank you very much.
My wife's gonna be upset. Sunday, my first Father's Day and you're hosting a Juneteenth event, but it's okay, we're gonna be there. It'll be a great time. Take your baby with you. I am, I am.
Any other announcements from City Hall? Chief of Staff, come on up.
Good afternoon, Mariana Hernandez, Chief of Staff. Uh, I just wanted to update all of the council members that we have applied for the second disbursement of the ARPA funds. Uh, so hopefully that money will be coming into our account soon. Uh, additionally, we are also going out for an RFP that went live today for a management services company that will help Mr. Div with the management planning of all the different projects that are gonna be associated with the ARPA funds.
So for those residents that are not familiar with the ARPA funds, I am, but can you please give us an abbreviation of that?
Yes, uh, so the American Rescue Plan Act funds, uh, were released to different cities, uh, and throughout the country in 2020, 21, sorry, 2021. Um, so we received about $24 million. Uh, those dollars are restricted funds and they should be used in projects related to water and sewer, broadband, uh, COVID-related issues and a few other minimal items. But those are the top three that we're gonna be focusing here at the city of Dearborn Heights. A lot of those being for water and sewer, flood mitigation, et cetera. So again, this new company that we're going out for an RFP is gonna be helping us, uh, determine which ones of those uh, we'll be using as well as collaborating with different organizations that could be potentially matching some of our funds, like the Wayne County, um, as the mayor was mentioning, Wayne County also received funds that they can allocate for different projects. So we will be collaborating with those on, on coming up with how we can best utilize those funds.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else from administration? Hearing and seeing none, I assume there's none on Zoom. Okay, so, Bill Dishroom, our ordinance director, go ahead, please. I, I presume Dana is a resident, is that correct?
I'm thinking, cause our Dana's-
I'm sorry?
Yeah, I think so. I think it's a resident.
Do you?
It's not her.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, but Director Dishroom?
Can you, can you hear me, Council Chair?
Yes, we can.
Okay, uh, just, uh, I'll be as brief as I can. Uh, just so you know, we're gonna be doing the ordinance sweeps on the southeast side of the city. Uh, that's gonna be, I believe it's, uh, 24th of June. Uh, the letters went out, everybody in the area, dear.
You're, you're cutting off badly, Director.
What's that?
You're cutting off badly.
Oh, of course. Um, I'll try to, like I said, I'll, I'll speak as loud as I can and as brief as I can. Uh, we're gonna be doing the ordinance sweep on the southeast side of the city. Uh, that's coming up on June 24th. Everybody should have gotten a letter. Um, also, I wanna remind people, if you need a special pickup from Priority Waste, you need to contact them. We're really cracking down on people, uh, using the easement as a dumpster.
You're breaking-
Uh, recycle bins and yard waste, uh, mediums that you're supposed to use. Do not litter the easement with trash. If you need a special pickup, please call Priority Waste. Got a handful of complaints and we're issuing tickets, just so you know. That's it, Council Chair. I yield the rest of my time. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Director. Next up, I believe that's, as far as directors are concerned, is that correct? Madam Clerk?
I think so, there's not, not any-
Administration. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and go to public comments. You will have three minutes.
You want Zoom first?
Yes, go ahead and go to Zoom.
Okay.
Sorry, Leslie, again. So we're gonna-
We're gonna do Zoom first.
We're gonna do Zoom first, Vince, if you don't mind. I don't wanna get in trouble with Leslie.
No problem.
We'll do Zoom first. You'll have three minutes. Please state the city, street that you live on and name, and then we'll go ahead and go in the audience.
Okay, Victoria?
Now, for tho- for those on Zoom, before we let you on, if you don't mind, please pay attention to the Zoom screen, cause we're gonna put up different signs as far as how much time you'll have left. So we can do this in a nice and polite way, but you'll have three minutes. Uh, so who's coming up? Who's coming first? Victoria?
Victoria Martinez.
Okay, Victoria Martinez, go ahead.
Victoria?
Victoria, can you unmute yourself, please? All right, we'll go ahead and go to Dana next and then come back to Victoria.
I'm muted, I apologize.
Oh, there's her.
Oh, there she is, okay.
My woman's Victoria Martinez. I live on Dartmouth in Dearborn Heights in the south end. Um, I hear the ordinance is coming through and that you all are cracking down. And I understand that Priority Waste is a work in progress and I'm appreciative of the process that we have to go through. However, I have contacted them twice because they're failing to empty my cans fully and I'm stuck with trash in my yard, literally, because I don't have anywhere else to put it. And I'm afraid of getting a ticket due to their negligence.
If, can you, do you mind giving us the address and then we'll have somebody- You know what? Can you call tomorrow morn- you might as well call-
Uh, 3490.
Okay, so call, uh, tomorrow morning to 313-791-3490. And the mayor's administration will connect you with somebody from Priority, make sure it's taking care of Victoria.
I appreciate that. I have contacted them directly and they said that they were putting an order in and they failed to come back out, so.
Yeah, the, the mayor's office will take care of that for you, or you could email off of the website if you prefer. To the, to your email, to the mayor's email directly.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. Next up, we have Dana Parrish. Go ahead.
Good evening, uh, Dana Parrish, uh, Runyon Park Street, Dearborn Heights. Uh, Council Chair, I know you received the, uh, email that I sent. I'm not gonna go through the whole email. I just wanted to say a couple of things about what we're in there and, uh, hopefully you've sub- you submitted that to, uh, members of the council.
I did. All, all the council members did receive it.
I don't wanna go through all that. I, I just wanted to make sure that, um, everyone looks at the fact that 2011, all the residents of the city of Dearborn Heights, um, did pass the headley override. So we are paying higher taxes, uh, we just passed the, all the budgets. I think the comptroller, I was able to follow through the, what the comptroller did and his work. I know not everyone agreed, but some of the things he did or the way he did it, but I was actually able to follow the, the budget- was actually able to follow the budget process fairly well. I want everyone to kind of think about one thing, which was, the first day, the comptroller said, we've been, the city has been spending at a rate higher than our revenues. If we, if we had continued at the rates that we were doing, I think he said, we'd have like $100,000 in our budget by next year. We had two, two sources of, of one-time revenue sources, one that the chief of staff pinned it on. So, so we need to make sure we look at what we're doing. I don't know how in the world, Plant Moran, Martin, who was a support. Are you on in? We're in a great position? We were not in a great position. We're outspending. We're in a horrible position. If you did that, Mr. Abdullah, you'd be closing your doors at your real estate office. Second thing, I see I have 60 seconds. Thank you, Mr. Baydun. Actually, the next one's for you. 4693 Universal. I had a lady contact me because she knew that I spoke up at these meetings, and she said she contacted you, sent me screen captures where you said you didn't know what was going on there, and you said you don't know what to do anymore, and she said that the owner, you said the owner was out of town, sir. I checked. The city owns that property, sir. You sent it to Bill Dishroom. I don't know why he did that. Bill Dishroom doesn't handle city-owned property, sir. And Bill Dishroom was never contacted. This was on June 3rd when we sent that, that text. Something needs to be done with that, sir. Can you, can you address that, since you sent her the text on June 3rd?
Yeah, I reached out to Bill Dishroom regarding that.
But he, he never was contacted, and he's the wrong person to contact. That's a city-owned property. That's a DPW property. And he was never contacted.
Yeah, he was. I spoke with him at City Hall.
Okay, I just spoke to him before the meeting. He said you never contacted him. And he's the wrong person. DPW handles city-owned properties. The ordinance director does not. Just like 5666 Gremlins Park. Thank you, Chairman. I appreciate the time, sir. Have a good evening. Everyone have a wonderful evening, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Dana.
Council Chair, one minute.
Yeah, go ahead.
One second. We have city property that we need to start taking care of, Mr. Mayor. I would think that you need to talk to your directors and see what we can do about some of that blighted city-owned property. But I guess Gary Miyake's got to chime in.
I'm sorry, counsel, but the administration did present, and I'm sorry, Mayor, did present proposals with respect to renewing the cap program last year, and nothing has been done with respect to that. I get regular inquiries from people who are potentially interested in purchasing properties. We need to end up having kind of a unified policy. The mayor has made this a priority. We have had an opportunity. Mayor wishes to speak about it, but some of this is, the council needs to basically give us authority to undo some of it.
Has it come before us? No.
No, it did twice, and you guys rejected it.
Yeah.
Rejected the cap program?
Last year.
Last year.
Twice.
I, I think we should bring it back.
Yeah, I have no problem with bringing it back, but I don't remember rejecting the cap program.
No.
We did, we did it when we were at the library.
We had proposals, we had people, you know, I mean, we did what we were supposed to do, and, and spent a lot of time on it, too, so.
Well, I, I tell you, as a council chair, I'm absolutely all for bringing back the cap program and, and taking a look at it. And if, if you think it would be helpful, I'd have no problem setting up maybe a study session on that, so we can see which direction. Or just bring it back.
Just bring it back. Please bring it back.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
Bring it back on the next meeting.
And for those in the audience that are not familiar with the cap program, when a property goes to foreclosure, tax foreclosure, that is, there's different entities that have first right of refusal, specifically the state, and then eventually it comes to us, and obviously we have first right of refusal, where we can buy the property back, make sure a particular, either resident or whoever it is that's bidding on it, we put some conditions for them to fix it up, and then put it back on the market and go ahead and sell it. So basically to beautify the property, make sure it's not let go. That's the general synopsis.
Put it back on the tax roll.
Absolutely, bring it back. I'm all in favor of it.
Council Chair, and just to my recollection, what happened with that cap program, if that's okay?
Yes.
We were, we were in, you know, we were going through conversations with Corporation Council Miyake, and it was more of, people didn't know about the bid. People wanted to bid on it. And I remember one of them was a nonprofit. He told us you couldn't do it because of profit reasons.
I remember that now, yes.
And, you know, they were, we're going back and forth. Then he said there was going to be a new program that he was going to put forward potentially for nonprofits in the community. That's what initially the conversation was happening. It was referred back to the administration and never sent back to us.
Yeah, I don't remember like turning it down.
Uh, I believe.
But either way, either way, let's go ahead and bring it back forward.
August 10th.
Right. I believe it was supposed to be set for a study session, so we would know what we were.
Just bring it back, please.
That's very good.
Yep, absolutely. Okay? Go ahead.
Sorry, I just want clarification. In order for us to bring it back, we do need to rebid the process because all of the bidders closed. So if it's okay with the council, I would like to put that out for bids tomorrow with the exact same specifications as last year, and that way we will put it out for about a month, and when we have new candidates, we can bring it back to the council.
The only X factor on that is with the exact specifications, at least for myself, I can speak for myself specifically. I, I don't recall what the specifications were to say yes. So I mean, can we, can we have at least a couple of days, whatever, to look at it, see what those specifications are?
Okay.
Yes.
Maybe, maybe we can do what we did. There are a few things we have to tweak because of the number of properties that we anticipate having, but then we will basically work with the same model that we did last time. And there's also an interesting option that the mayor explored. We had a meeting with some people. That might be something else, and it is a nonprofit entity, but it is an entity that specifically deals with these types of issues and might be a very good fit as well. That might require us. We might, I'm sorry, Mayor.
No, so one, one of the things is, is to offer some of these homes so that the nonprofit actually is involved with a lot of communities in the, in the area. And one of, one of the things, what I like to do is offer some of these homes, so the nonprofit comes in and fixes up the home. So basically, they get it at cost, and they can actually give it at a certain price to first responders, to encourage them to come live in the city, the first responders, you know, police officers, firefighters, veterans, or disabled. They can actually bid on those homes, or actually they can go to.
So they have the first right to bid on it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it'll be first responders, you know, police, fire, and also, I mean, you know, like every community loves to have first responders living in the city, and especially if they, you know, work in the city. And also, like I said, you know, veterans, you know, and somebody with veteran status or, or anybody who's disabled. So that's one of the things that would, that this nonprofit organization, that was very appealing to me is because then, you know, we can actually reach out to the people who served us, you know, the first responders and also veterans, and, you know, or the disabled.
Okay. Mariana, maybe before we put it out for bids, maybe send a copy to each of the council members. Let's at least just, at least to get an idea, and then we can go ahead and address maybe going out maybe next week or something.
At this point, I don't know what we're doing.
Well, we got to do a pilot with the, I'm sorry, Mariana, but we got to do that, the first one with what I just discussed, it'd be like a pilot program to see how, how successful that would be.
And is this part of an overall kind of cap program with the same structure, but have, have that entity, is that, Mayor?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else in administration? Okay, Hassan Jamal, go ahead. Oh, I'm sorry, we're, we're off administration, Hassan, I apologize. That was earlier. So you know what? Just, just to be out of respect, I'll give you two minutes as an individual, not as a director. I don't know how you're speaking out, but I'll give you two minutes. Go ahead.
Oh, thank you for your generosity.
It's not generosity because we're done with the directors.
This is, you know, this is, this is very well. I mean, I don't know, are we paying per second? This is a response to my friend Dana, Mr. Dana Parrish, regarding 4693 Universal, since I had to step in, since nobody else has answered. This particular, this particular house was directed to me by the administration today to be looking at demolishing that house using CDBG allocated money for slum emplight that we have in the budget. So this particular house will be declared by the building department as a slum emplight and ready to be demolished according to the state regulations, and we'll go ahead and demolish it ASAP. That's the status responding to one of the resident's concern. Thank you for your generosity. You know, Council Chair, and I yield my, the rest of my.
I'm, I'm feeling very Christmasy, that's why.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Director. And as always, you're doing a good job, Director. Keep it up. All right. So now we're going to go ahead and go to public comments, is that correct? There's nobody else? I know, okay. We're done with Zoom, so we're going to go, go to the audience. Vince, you first. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That's Strapkowski, Columbia Street. When I first wrote this and sat down to think about this, I was pretty heated up. So I'm just going to let it fly. Where were you Memorial Day 2022? I have been a resident of Dearborn Heights for over 50 years. I have attended memorial services at the St. Hedwig Cemetery since my childhood. Where I watched my father, a member of the Veterans of Foreign Wars Post Liskawa, practice every step while he served in the Honor Guard. I honor those who served and sacrificed. I honor the Dearborn Heights residents who fell while fighting for our freedoms granted to us over our Constitution. Their lives meant something to my father. Their lives mean something to me. It is evident, they don't mean anything to you. Your public service with the people of Dearborn Heights, yet some of your representatives attended Dearborn Ceremony. Did you forget the primary duty? Do you forget the people, the brothers, the sisters, the mothers, the fathers, the aunts, the uncles, who perished in the European War, the theater, the Pacific Theater, Korea, the Middle East, and other places around the globe? Money was supposed to be come with a public obligation to the people of the city. It appears that you ignored that. Excuse me, that's my medication. City officials did not openly participate in the celebration of their lives. You've embarrassed their city. Obvious, your obligation to the city should come first. As duly elected government officials, you should hold your heads low in shame. I sincerely hope that 2023 brings a place to honor them and bring back the Honor Guard for the police department, so that you can lay a wreath, just like the veterans did, from the step post and all the other organizations that were there. This is a annual deal. It's never been forgotten before. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Vez.
Yes. State your name, city, and street.
Good evening, Afaf Ahmad, 3535 Circus, Dearborn, Michigan. I'm a candidate for state rap, district 15. Oh, sorry, I didn't know, I thought, okay, sorry. Okay, I came here for one point, but I ended up with a couple of points in regards to today's schedule. For the golf course, thank you for the clarification about that there's no any buildings or anything that can be built on this course, because I'm here presenting many of citizens that came and questioned me about it, and I'm glad that it's been clarified about that point. But please, for the next meeting, I know Mr. Mayor, Mr. Bill Bezzie, said that's going to be in the schedule for the next meeting for the voting. If you do not, if you please, before you guys vote on it, just give like a small description exactly how the process did work, because I'm hearing a lot of stories that favoring somebody against somebody else. So it's good just to explain how the process was, how it was going on, so I can translate that in Arabic to many people to see what's going on about it, and I'll have my own input about it at the next meeting. In regards to the police chief that he mentioned about the new app that's going to be up there, I would really appreciate, Dearborn Heights, we're having many people coming in from everywhere. We have a lot of diversity. We have serious issues about the Arabic language. So I'm, since I work in media, I have my own platform, my own radio shows, and also on social media shows. We need like something in Arabic or communication with any platform in Arabic that they can translate, and also on the app and the city also website, to have something to help people can go in and see what the, what's going on in Arabic language. And for the app for the police, thank you so much, Mr. Council Chairman Dave Abdullah, for always answering my phone call, and especially lately when there was some incident going on, like a donut happening at night, Sunday night, where I witnessed it, and he got in contact with Bill Bezzie. Thank you for stepping in, and also the chief police for taking care of that issue. And I would really appreciate if in the app, we have also an icon where people can report incidents what's happening, in this way, it can be in Arabic or English, available for both languages, all the language available in the city, so people can report instances what happening, happening, because I know the police cannot be able to be there all the time or take all the calls, so it's really appreciated to have that. And lastly, what are we doing about educating citizens about the new district, the new district and the new maps? Because many people do not know which district they belong to, where they have to vote, so we need more education about that part. And thank you for Hassan Ahmed, Councilman, for taking care about the child who lost their bike. But I really appreciate also if you have something, communication, we allow people, citizens to involve more. The city council can have something on the website to have the citizens also get, step in and involve and be part of these activities and share anything with the community. And the final, I know Mr. Ray Muscat mentioned that people are complaining on social media, why don't we have a separate platform for the citizens to express what's inside them? They put it on their page, and somebody from the city can respond to them in case if nobody can answer their phone calls. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Just Chief, other questions that the young woman brought up. On the code red, is it a two-way communication or just from administration out?
Just one way.
One way?
Yeah.
Okay. So, so a resident could not put in a complaint on there? Let's, let's say they see some sort of a thing, they could not. Okay. Sorry. Thank you. Come on up, sir. Go blue.
Padaleery, Dearborn Heights, Vernon.
What's, street name, please? Okay, thank you.
I started golf at Warren Valley in 1970. I grew up playing that course. It was my home course for high school. I played it every day. I played it every day, I probably played it more than anybody since 1970, other than maybe Mr. Jayware, he was the old club pro. I did a walkabout through there Sunday, I sent pictures of Mr. Wenzel and Mr. Muscat. The course is ruined, completely, grass up to here, all the way up the knees, every single hole, the whole from Beach Daily to Golfview Manor, I grew up in Golfview Manor, from Heinz Drive to Warren. Mr. Constant, you said that the previous owners left it in bad condition? Could you be a little bit more specific?
The, the former operator.
No, Mr. Constant said it.
Well, I would recommend that we be careful because we are potentially going to be involved in claims with respect to that, so I would.
Right, I, I'm with a group of guys and women that golfed there every weekend. We've been in meetings in the, in the, uh, the leagues there every weekend for years, and it was not left in bad condition at all, but it is now. The only part that was, was the washout of the river right by the 18 East Bridge on the way up to Number One. That should have been fixed in the first month. When you don't maintain the course, Mother Nature reclaims it, and she reclaimed it. All the greens are ruined, fairways, you can't tell it between that and a cow pasture. And it's very unfortunate.
I'm talking about he took equipment, he took golf carts.
Hmm, be careful with that. Nobody did an inventory, do you got pictures and documentation and inventory when they took over?
I, I can tell you, I can tell you that I walked through that golf course myself.
Recommendation in terms of equipment or anything else?
I'm not gonna talk about.
Right, yeah, I understand that.
But what I, what I, what I visualized, that building was in horrible, horrible shape.
I'm not talking about the building.
Hang on, let me finish.
Okay, all right, no problem.
And I walked the golf course myself. Pump house was a complete disaster. That just didn't happen overnight, okay? I saw the main, main electrical panel that supplies the, I, I would, I'm gonna assume is 480 volt three phase to those pumps.
Yep.
It was leaning so far back, you couldn't open the door of that panel. That panel had rust holes as large as my fist. That didn't happen in one year, two years, or three years.
Decades.
So, so you can't, somebody can't tell me that that was properly maintained. Stuff that's that visual, that you can see that was not maintained, leads me to believe there are other things that weren't maintained. Plus, sir, and I know you're an avid golfer, but I also know a lot of avid golfers that golfed at Warren Valley and other golf courses throughout the state. Warren Valley, they said, was one of the most horrible golf courses they've ever golfed at. I'm, I'm only saying what other golfers, uh, beside you have told me. And then they went over to Inkster, and they say that course is just as bad, if not worse. I'm only telling you what I was told. You're telling me something different? I'm just telling you something that was.
I see it firsthand, I've seen it firsthand, I've played there for years, hundreds and hundreds of rounds, still played there, all the way up to the last days.
But I'm not gonna argue that.
And the wires to the pump house, I've worked at all golf courses, I've worked at golf courses, I've worked on all the equipment, I rent all the equipment, I run everything from the sprinkler systems to pump houses to motors, five minutes, hook that motor back up. That pump house is for the sprinkler system.
Correct.
It has nothing to do with the water that's standing on the course right now. In four months, there hasn't been one pump on that course.
But I didn't say that. It's at the pump house.
Okay, all right. The pump house for the sprinkler system.
The gentleman obviously is entitled to make his comments, but my recommendation would be not to, because we have issues with the former concessionaire.
And I have nothing against the ESAs, Mr. ISA, I don't know him from anything, um, but when you're looking for a course management company, you don't put an ad in the paper, you do your homework, you have one of the leading course management colleges in the country in your backyard, did anybody bother to call him for references? Ferris State. Anybody bother to call him? I mean, just putting an ad in the papers, not really doing your homework to try and get anybody. And now, you're gonna give that contract to a person that doesn't know anything about golf or the golf season in Michigan or course management, is a third-person party instead of going directly to a course management company? And they're gonna be the ones that you need to deal with. Don't buy a third person, and I have nothing against Mr. ISA, it's not his fault, he didn't grow up in a, in a golf world, okay? I don't have, I don't even know the guy. But to give it to somebody that isn't a course management company, just sounds like bad business, very bad business.
I'll, I'll make a quick comment on that. Mr. Isa, as far as knowing how to run a business, A++, plus. As far as the golfing is concerned, he specifically said that's not his field of expertise, and he said he's hiring a company to run the golf part of the business.
What company is that?
I, I, they're still negotiating the contract, so I'm not privy to the specifics, but I'm, I'm just telling you what he's mentioned.
And comments were made that the course was cut, that someone took a lawnmower out there. Three weeks ago, someone from Cattails was hired to come out and cut a couple greens, they cut five greens, two west, three west, four west, 13 and 15 west greens. That's the only grass that's been cut on the whole course. Not one other blade of grass been cut on the course, other than the 30-yard frontage on Warren Road. Not one, at all. You go out there right now, do you know what the price of a green is to replace? Anybody? Take a guess. 20, 20 grand, 30 grand, and that's only because Donald Ross, his trademark are postage stamp sized greens, dime sized greens. If there are bigger regulation greens, you'd be way over. And the other thing is, 36 holes has been 36 holes, and the reason for the 36 holes is, and some of the times when you had 60 days of rain last year, you could take some of the holes from one course and play them, the high, high grounds, and still get in a full round of golf. So to change it from 36 to 18 would be ridiculous. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Council Chair.
Can I get back in line?
Yeah.
No, unfortunately, no.
I'll let him do. I'll use my time to him.
Just one quick, the, the last meeting, the 24th, the last person that spoke, he was in line twice, but the very last person that spoke mentioned that friends of his bought a golf course in Bloomfield, cost him $12 million to get it going. That's what you're looking at at Warren Valley. You have no idea what that course is right now. You could not go out and cut the greens right now. There's molehills, there's, I mean, you guys had your lawns cut, fertilized and taken care of how many times, a dozen? This is a golf course with greens that cost thousands, tens and thousands of dollars, you got 36 of them, and it wasn't touched at all. It looks like a cow pasture, it's pathetic. Just do your homework and get a course management company.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Council Chair, we should be careful what we say up here at the council table because there was another misspoken fact about the golf carts being taken from, uh, the previous owner taking the golf carts. And as some of us know, and I can't believe, we all don't know this, those golf carts belong to a rental company, the rental company came and got the golf carts.
Okay, thank you. All right, sorry.
Hi, Angela Venegas, Dwight Street, Dearborn Heights, Michigan. It's been a while since I've been up here, kind of letting things lay out, watching bills, see what's going on, and trying to see what's gonna be happening in the city. And I too am kind of disappointed about what's going on at the golf course. Whether they opened the golf course or not this year, what happens there, it's the way it is presented by people who come here and visit the city. We at least need to maintain the grass outside the golf course around the banquet center. It, it looks terrible, and we're, and we're supposed to be doing summer concerts there. How are we gonna do summer concerts there? You guys have wood stacked there, um, it, it's a mess, there's potholes everywhere. It just needs to be made to look presentable, that, that's, that's all. And I want to talk about the storm that went through, and I know a lot of people don't realize how bad it hit north of Warren Avenue. Um, there's still neighborhoods that nothing's been picked up, nothing's been taken care of, and there were, there were no boots on the ground, there was nobody here from the city to represent the residents in that area, nobody to tell them, you know, what was gonna happen with their power, when things were gonna be picked up. There, there was a lot of homes that were devastated, cars that were crushed with trees, and I just don't understand why nobody was out there to take care of the residents and at least inform them what they should be doing. And, um, there's still neighborhoods, there's still debris and stuff is laying around, and just what's gonna happen? Where do those people turn to? I mean, it's been almost two weeks. Does anybody have any answers?
I know DPW is still working, uh, every day trying to clear some of the wood, that's why they brought some of the stuff to Warren Valley to clear some of the streets. So we're gonna keep doing it every day till we clear all the neighborhood. Once we get that done, then we're gonna clear the stuff from Warren Valley, do the concert.
Okay, and, um, you guys are doing all these citywide sweeps, and about a month and a half ago, I was there with Ray and Vince and I were at the south end, and there were gentlemen from ordinance there representing ordinance. And, um, it's about all the repeat offenders, people who are always written up for blight, always written up for their grass not being cut. So with the first sweep, I heard there was over 300 violations written. I'm just curious, as to of those 300 people, how many of them repeat offenders, and why do we keep out giving people warnings and not tickets? How do you ever expect the city to look halfway decent if people aren't held accountable? When I'm speeding in my car and I get a ticket, I have to pay a fine. This is no different. And I, I'm gonna give a prime example, and this doesn't even concern blight. I have a neighbor that lives next door to me, it's a rental house. He's had a car since January 1st parked in his backyard on the grass. On February 8th, they came through and they gave him something that said he partially complied. Was his partial compliance the piece of plywood he put down the park on? I mean, what's going on? And now, he was supposed to be going to court the 30th of June, and the car is still sitting there. He parks there every day, there's ruts about this deep in the backyard, mud all over the driveway. What do we have to do in the city of Dearborn Heights, whether it's to change ordinances? You just can't keep giving people warnings. This city is looking like hell. It's dirty, grass isn't cut, there's weeds everywhere. What are we doing? Do we have to bring the judges in here to speak to them to get something taken care of, something needs to change? I just wish you guys could give people answers. I mean, it's not fair for me. We've had homes that have been left empty, I go and I cut the grass. It's not my responsibility, but I get sick and tired of looking at it. When we have problems with garbage on the street, I've taken a 30-gallon trash bag down my street after trash pickup and picked up garbage. Something needs to be done and something needs to change.
I hear you.
Can you stay up there for a second, please?
Believe me, I hear you, and you know I hear you. I, I went and spoke with the judges and, uh, I hear due process and all of this, but it, it just irritates me when it's the same people over and over and over again, and, uh, to me, that's, that, that's a lawyer thing, to me. Somebody's gotta step up and take a, a, a step and challenge this, whatever they wanna call due process, because the city should not be in business going around and telling people to cut their lawns and keep their houses up, but unfortunately, we, we have to, you know? Uh, years ago, in the 60s, 70s, 80s, 90s, and early 2000s, our, our ordinance department was small because we didn't need one.
Right.
We had very few problems, but now it's, it's escalated so bad, uh, you know, and I, and I'm gonna say it, and I probably shouldn't say it, but I'm gonna say it. You know, when you have a tremendous amount of rental homes, and the homes are owned by corporations, and most, some of them are even out of state.
Or out of the country.
Yeah, a, and they just don't care, they, you know, as long as they get money.
Well, no, 'cause I even went to the owner, 'cause they just moved a half a mile on the other side of Warren Avenue, and spoke to them, and you know what he told me? They're paying their rent, I don't care. You live in the same area that you're becoming, letting become blighted and look terrible, and you live here. How do you not take pride where you live in? And I'm tired of picking up Tim Hortons cups, I'm four houses off the corner, Slurpee cups, Dairy Queen cups, because it begins at home, parents don't teach their kids to do the right thing. You don't take your garbage and just throw it out the car window.
Thank you.
Council Chair, we, we talked a while ago, did you want to bring that, me to bring that subject up?
Oh, yeah, I, I don't know if they'll allow me.
Yeah. Okay, I'll give you 30 more seconds.
Okay. There's been a lot of talk, when I sit in the audience here at city council, about Tom Wenzel and him not going to the golf course, that he really doesn't care, all he cares about is planning events there. And I'm just curious, Tom, have, have you ever been asked to go on a walk-through on the golf course?
Uh, I've never been asked to go on a walk-through.
Okay, thank you. The gossip needs to stop, people. Thanks.
I've been to the golf course several times, I even took my kids there, and they were shocked, because we have a golf outing there every year, and they couldn't believe it was the same golf course, you know? And, uh, I've walked on the golf course, I've walked into it, I mean, it's, it's flooded, so you can't go too far, I'm gonna be going on there with a golf cart soon. And, um, you know, and people say I need to go out to the golf course, you know, I don't need to go out to the golf course to see two-foot grass and blight, I'll just walk around my neighborhood.
Exactly, yep. I, I just wanted to put that gossip to rest, so thanks.
Thank you. Next up, I, in the white shirt, are you, you gonna be speaking or no? Oh, okay. No, no, I didn't wanna call my name.
Harry Siewicki.
I know, I know, I didn't wanna call my name. Come on up, sir. Come on up, sir. Please state your names, street you live on, city you live in.
Have a good night, everybody.
Speak into the mic, please.
Yeah, microphone, please.
Hello. Having a good night, everybody. My name is Munee Bedun, I live in 5630 Hubble Street, next door the English Garden. I have big tragedy the long time. Sir Abdullah, do you have idea before two years to come for my house to help me, but only fixing cement? What did read, what the, sorry, I don't speak good English, but.
It's okay, it's okay.
I can tell, I can translate for you.
No? Okay. I have big tragedy the long time, was it rain little bit, as a straight common north, north in the side, this is, the side, that's in five minutes or 10 minutes, I have lake. That's, I lost three car within six years, three car. I pay money, I fixing my basement, I have got no torn this, I paid $2,500. No problem, no internal weather, but what they have lake of side fog, no use shower, no use nothing, but this problem enter. Other day, Sir Mayor, thank you for help, he ordered PTWU, come for, for my house, it clean the pipe. But this is same thing, the personal have cancer, egalatilinol, it's no solution, I need solution for this problem for long time. The straight, it's need level straight, for no, need help, you fixing this for long, for every day.
Well, I've, I've, I've seen it, sir, firsthand.
Council Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, so we found out from, uh, both our engineer and also DPW, that street is what was under the, the CSO, so they did make the, the drains, you know, because of CSO, it's smaller, so it's not, you know, the big crates. So that's, that's one, one thing. So it's meant for the street, uh, uh, the flood instead of the homes, and obviously, you know, when the water recedes, it goes down, doesn't go to the, the homes. So, one of the biggest issue, uh, again, I don't wanna mention, you know which one I'm talking about, the business, the local business.
Mayor, would you flash the lights for me, I mean, she's not able to hear you for the recording, she's talking to her microphone, please.
These microphones are too short. So, again, I don't wanna talk about the business itself, but, uh, there was a concern with the business, and, uh, I did send ordinance, uh, over there that day, the same day. They've been having issues with that particular business, and, uh, they were not in compliance. Uh, so, the same day, they, they were issued a ticket. So they, there's a ticket now for the particular business, uh, because of that issue that is causing, uh, the issue that is causing the water, uh, again, I don't wanna say too much because I don't wanna say something about the business, but since you and I talked, uh, the business, uh, it was issued a ticket, and now it's gotta, it has to go to court, so for court appearance.
Sometime I clean, I, I have toll, special toll for a little, this not my work.
No, you do an amazing job, thank you.
I clean the leaf, I clean everything.
Yeah.
And my wife, I am old man, I have a problem with my heart, that's not my job, but it's needed, the problem not for me, for my neighborhood, the problem for other person who come for the straight, it drive, it lost the car, lot of car, damage for lot of person. So thank you for.
No, so we did issue the business a ticket, sir, and, uh, so we're gonna be monitoring it because, uh.
Sir Mayor, the problem is not detect, the problem is the pipe is too small, it is straight, this, the side have water, that's need straight plan.
What you're suggesting earlier in Arabic is, is additional concrete be added to the street, but I'm not, that's something, I don't think would work, I'm not gonna comment on that, that's not my specialty, but, uh, you know what I could do, sir? If you don't mind, maybe stay after, you can talk with Mr. Dave.
Sorry, I, I speak Spanish, I speak English, I speak French, I speak Indian, Chiricos de Colombia, I speak five language, pero no speak English, sorry.
But don't speak with Mr. Dave in the back.
Talk to him after the meeting.
After the meeting, that's the person to talk to, he's the one that's most familiar.
Thank you, Mr. Bedun.
If you ask Spanish, Mariana can help you, Mariana? Mariana, you handle the Spanish.
Okay, can, can you guys go outside?
Hey, uh, Mr. Dave. Mr. Bedun.
Mr. Bedun.
Mr. Bedun.
Wait, I'm sorry.
Can you wait till after the meeting?
After the meeting, just a few minutes.
After the meeting?
After the meeting, you can talk with Mr. Deeb.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
Good evening again, and I'm going to ask, please, for an extra minute. I may not use it, but I do have several issues to speak about. I might need the extra minute.
Okay.
First, I want to thank Lisa Hex Clayton, our.
Name, please.
Zuhair Abdalhaq. I thought by know, you know it by heart.
I know.
I know, but for the audience.
I could walk through your house blindfolded.
354 Rosemary, Dearborn Heights. It was good to separate Act 345 levy from the property tax. So the taxpayers will know how much they are paying toward the pension of the police and fire. Because actually, all the property tax which we collect from the whole city is almost not enough to pay for the pension of the police and fire annually. The resident need to know that. Okay, so that is a very expensive pension. I would like to ask the City Council President, can you share the letter from O'Naida to the City Council members dated April 29, 2021?
I will not myself personally decide that. I will have to refer that to our Corporation Counselor, if it's okay to share that publicly. What he's referencing is a letter that we received from O'Naida, giving a different opinion as far as what happened on the golf course.
Mr. Abdalhaq could make a FOIA request for it, and.
I have it. I don't need to make a FOIA request.
Okay, well then.
Okay, then I will say what it said. Basically, O'Naida claim everything they took from the golf course belonged to them legally. If there is anything different than that, I would encourage somebody to say so and to sue the hell out of him. There is damage, I believe, you know, it was extensive, yes, it was. It was out of normal, yes, it was. And I hope we take action for that reason. So, that's what the letter said. The resident need to hear the other side of the story, that all the equipment this man took from the golf course belonged to him legally. And he claims he paid out of his pocket to fix some of the equipment and some of the electric HVAC on his own money because the city did not respond to him. That letter was sent to all of you, including the mayor, including, I don't know if they gave it to the clerk. In my opinion, my personal opinion, from the beginning, the golf course issue was tainted from the very beginning. Any one of you was invited by the mayor for a private tour to the golf course?
No.
But one of the bidder was privately, the mayor took him and showed him the golf course and showed him the banquet and everything. I have the floor, Husein. You will have chance to respond. And I want you to ask our mayor, did he ask one of the bidders not to bid on the contract or not? I would like him to answer this in front of the whole city. That is against the law. That is against the law if that happen. That is favoritism, nepotism, anything you want to call it. And that why I'm saying this contract is tainted from the beginning because there was one person in nothing. I think the word of Mr. Isa, he's a very successful person, he's a terrific businessman, and I'm not going to say more about that. But I challenge that. I have a response to this. Now, my last subject is the number don't lie. Act 345, they made in 2012, 2.24% minus. 2015, 1.87, 2016, 2.9% minus. That's return on investment. In 2019, they made 4.5%. In 2020, minus 0.64. Now, those times when we have a minus or less than 5%, the resident paid the 5%, I did ask for an extra minute.
I did give you the.
Okay. So, I believe the factor we use, the 2.8 multiplied by 25 years, should to calculate the retirement benefit for the police and fire, should be extended to all the employees in the city. Do not give the general government 2.5 and give the police and fire 2.8. Nobody is better than anybody. We should be fair and just to everyone in the city. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Come on up. Name, street, city.
Sam, Dearborn Heights, Michigan, Wayne County.
The microphone, please, I'm sorry.
I didn't hear a street.
Garland Drive.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I would like to start by, from the beginning, as you mentioned, Mr. Wenzel. You're kind of exaggerated. You don't like the look of the dealerships around the city. It's not a city-related issue. I own almost five different types of car-related businesses, including a wholesale dealership. These kind of overstacking vehicle is not a city-related issue. If you want to do anything about it, your job is to contact Secretary of State, where they send in an inspector to that location. And believe me, it's not a cheap ticket. You're talking at least about $5,000 to $6,000, including probation time for that business, and nobody wants that kind of headache. So, you got to take that with the state, not through the city. Secondly, if you are damn much curious about the golf course, and you're very cautious about the look of the dealership, and since different people have brought up Mr. Isa's name out, I would encourage you, if you want to see what kind of person he is, you're more than welcome. West Financial, Telegraph between Fort and Hast. That will give you a great picture. But going back to Mr. Abdalhaq, if you don't mind, Counsel Chair, if you guys really want to debate.
Sir, always talk through the chair, please.
If people really want to debate stuff about the golf course, and specifically Mr. Isa, I'm bringing the mayor's name out. I've asked for it before, and I'll ask you for it again. If you would like, Mr. Wenzel, set up the date, set up the time, ask for a study session, whatever you want, I'd be more than happy. And I'll bring you what was your agenda, and if fingers going to be pointed out at the mayors, and Mr. Isa's going to be brought out, believe me, I'll bring more disgusting stuff out. As you know very well, is there a special meter for the issue? I'm always here. Just let me know when you want to hear it. I'd be more than happy to let you hear it. Thank you, Counsel Chair.
Okay, thank you, sir. You're more than welcome. Come on up. Name, street, city.
Hello. Rachel Lapointe, Merrick Street, Dearborn Heights. Great job on the Spirit Festival, Kim. It was a great time. My kids had a blast. It was so good to, like, get back to normally activities. And I know the kids, it just was such a great start to the summer. So, I know that, I know that it's going to be a good summer because we had a good start. So, regarding the light pole at Richard A. Young, and it being an emergency to fix it this week, was it not an emergency, the two months that it's been there, broken right next to the middle school, and with all the kids there? Like, I get that it needs to be fixed, but if it's a real emergency that it could fall over, it should have been done within a week and send the bill on. Because somebody could have gotten hurt or killed in the last two months. I have a kid that goes there. I don't want that to happen. That's ridiculous. As a mom, doesn't sound like an emergency necessarily to me. But let's get on those things faster. Regarding the ordinance letters, for future sweeps, please try and get them out on time. The letter says three weeks. I received it with 11 days left, not three weeks to get things cleaned up. I knew that was coming because I pay attention to things. There are plenty of residents in the zone that had no idea these letters were coming. They had no idea ordinance sweeps were happening. The letter says three weeks. It's actually happening in 11 days. Three weeks is 21 days. So, the math clearly doesn't line up there. So, please, please, for the residents that do not follow City Council meetings, that do not live on social media or whatever, that aren't going to know it's upcoming, when they get their letters for the next one, please get it out three weeks in advance, since that's what the letter says. Okay? Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, Counsel Chair.
Counsel, my client.
Real quick, in a rebuttal, though, why does anybody need a warning to keep their home up?
I'm disabled. It will take me more than three weeks if I'm disabled to clean up.
Well, I understand that, but, you know, normally, people, but I'll tell you what, I'm willing to bet the percentage of people that are disabled are not as high as you think they are, because most people that.
She's not the one that came up with the three weeks.
I, no, but I'm saying, but why do you need a warning to keep your house up?
You don't need a warning.
Correct. I understand that. That can be taken care of.
Let's hand it. Thank you.
But if you need a warning to keep your house up.
Thank you, Counsel.
Shame on you.
Sir?
Thank you. My name is Cass Swigson, 8152 Virgil, Dearborn Heights. I don't want to go anymore on this Warren Valley Golf Course. I had a lot to say about it. The gentleman over there spoke beautifully. And Wenzel, I'll back you up a little bit, too. I'm only 12 years younger than that golf course, so I've seen an awful lot. I've seen Joe Lewis go down Warren Avenue, play golf over there. I swam in the river next to the fairway on 18 East when I was 14 years old. And my daughter and I canoed through that river from Merriman Road all the way to Telegraph. But I worked there as a volunteer for three, four years now. And I've sort of took umbrage, Mr. Mayor, for you saying that you got that golf course in an embarrassing position. I worked my butt off over there, cutting trees, picking up garbage. Even when I played golf, I picked up trash, just to have something nice. I want something nice. And I back up the fellow that was running the golf course before, and as a matter of fact, I'm over in Inglewood Valley, working over there, trying to make that place look nice. And I look at that golf course, Warren Valley, I stop at the side entrance on Beach Daily, and I look over there, and like he says, it's that high. It's a pasture. When I lived on a farm, we had a cow that walked around and ate that stuff. I don't know how you're ever going to get it back in position. I'm sorry to see it, and it's sort of an embarrassment for me to have somebody come over and look at it. I'm sorry. And that's what I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
For those other members of the audience that are coming up to speak, do me a favor. Please do not say the street number. Just say the street name, city, and name only. We should not be giving out, you know, our individual addresses. Come on up, sir. Street, city, and name.
Good evening. San Sab, John Daly, Dearborn Heights, Michigan. Referring back to Mr. Abdalhaq's comments about somebody backing out from the bid process. You're talking directly about me? Yes, you are.
Talk to the chair and the audience, please.
I backed out. I had both, two great guys were bidding against it. I decided to back out. If this bid is put back out, and I'll say it in front of you, in front of anybody else that's going to bid it, I'm willing to put an escrow for the city, $2.4 million to renovate that property like my proposal would have been originally. Everybody going around saying that private tours, that's a public property, it's city-owned property. You can walk through that property anytime you want. You don't need the mayor's escrow or private showings. It was open for business. Anybody can walk in there. Anybody can request a tour of it. If it does go out for bid, and you want to put it for bid to the council and anybody, I request you, whoever's going to propose that bid, have them put their own money in escrow. I'm willing to put $2.4 million in escrow if it's allowed to go back out for bid. And I stand behind that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other members of the audience that would like to speak? Please state. Name, street.
I'm James Hartley, Woodward Avenue, Detroit, Michigan.
What?
I'm here as a guest, Council Chair, members of Council and Mayor, because of your solid waste issues. And I think that this issue could be solved very easily. And I reached out to the mayor, and he graciously forwarded me to the DPW folks. And I, my background is in government performance, and I deal with specifically solid waste issues. One of the things that's missing, and I hear it from the audience on Zoom, and you members of Council, is there's a disconnect in a lot of the communication. So, Councilman said, you know, your phone is ringing last, this week, maybe than last week, and that's wonderful. The issue is, where are the phones ringing? They ring at the mayor's office, they ring at the waste hauler's office, they ring at DPW. None of those areas are connected. So you really don't have a way of measuring performance. And the best way to fix something is to know that you're fixing the problem. And the only way to do that is through a cohesive method of performance measurement, and that's where my expertise comes in. I've done it here in Michigan's third-largest city, where I worked. I've also done it in solid waste haulers here in Michigan and throughout the country. And my plea to you is that we come up with a strategy, and I'm happy to help you do it, where you can put in place citizen request management, which is certainly something that folks could use, which then bleeds over to the elected members who need to respond to folks and know exactly what the problems are, other than your phone is ringing more or less than others. And to the other Councilman's point, sometimes it's the problem is with the resident who is complaining. Maybe they're the ones that are not adhering to code and things. So, it's a two-way street. I'd like to suggest, and I hope we're working with the DPW folks, and hopefully with you in the future, if you would have me, be able to bring together all those elements and have a way for you to know that the problem is getting better or it's getting worse over time. And of course, the waste industry is cyclical, so you'd want to measure, for instance, second week of June this year versus last year, not necessarily in December and things like that. So, again, I'm happy to help you in any way that I can, and I thank you for your response. And best of luck to you. Solid waste is a difficult industry. So, thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Actually, that means a lot. Thank you for coming out here today.
I'm here for you.
Good evening. My name's Hassan Bazzy. I live on Sheahan Highway. You know, my.
Dearborn Heights.
Dearborn Heights, definitely. Actually, we've been sitting here for over three, four hours. My biggest complaint, and that's directed to our Mr. Mayor, the vending machine is not working outside. So, would you guys please make sure it's working next time we come to the meetings? Thank you.
That's it? Thank you.
I don't see any more, Counsel.
I'd like to, I'd like to welcome in the audience here, members of TCD, world-renowned TCD Media Network, so thank you. Anybody else would like to come up? Huh? That's, the mayor Bazzy's in charge of that. We made him the director and the committee chair of that, so he's taking care of that. He'll take care of the vending machine.
Leslie Winless, Annapolis Street, Dearborn Heights, Michigan, 48125. Just a couple comments. So, when people come up here for public comment, it's not really supposed to be a debate. It's not supposed to be a back and forth, unless somebody is asking for a response or asking a question. We don't need a response from every single council member every time someone comes up to the podium. I'm just going to throw that out there. And some of it takes a certain tone that I don't think is appropriate, especially when we're talking to women. So I'd also like us to check that at the door, because that's one thing I just cannot tolerate. So I'm going to apologize for my outburst, but that's the reason why I did it. The next thing is the sweep thing. Off for it. No one hates blight like me. If you think that I am the police at City Council meetings, you should see me on the corner of Annapolis and Academy. However, you need a system for elderly people, low-income people, disabled people, whatever the reason is that they can't keep up their houses. There are clubs like the Key Club, for Annapolis and Crestwood and all these other high schools, football teams that need community service, college kids at Henry Ford. I'm actually the chair of the community service club there. These kids need things to do. So if there are people who can't keep their house up for valid reasons, we can create a system to partner with them, with people who are able-bodied, who can help them with this, and I think that would solve the problem. That is a lot of the reason why people need a three-week notice. I don't personally believe they need a three-week notice. I personally don't believe they need a warning at this point, because we talk about it every single City Council meeting. However, since the administration decided to be gracious to give a three-week. However, since the administration decided to be gracious to give a three-week notice, then they do need to make sure that it's mailed to people within three weeks. Next, Facebook comments. People go to Facebook because that is where they get answers. The way you combat that is, one, stop answering questions on Facebook, um, so people don't think they need to come there to get an answer from city council members. But two, create a system where they can get the answer just as easy or just as fast. The reason they go to Facebook is because they get it quicker. Uh, you can give me an extra minute like you did the other guy. Next, um.
I can do that.
Next, um.
I approve.
I can't read that. So I can't read what I was gonna write. See, this is why I like to type my, got my comments on my laptop, but I can't, because I can't read my handwriting. But I'll, I'll email you that one. The next thing I wanted to say was the event put on by, I think the Bellagio last Thursday was the one that put the event on there, it was a private event, I don't remember who paid for it. But I do want to say it was really nice to meet the police chief at that event and have him welcome out to the community and to see the layout for everything that's going on. I know for me, I was very nervous about the fact that we had not met the commissioner and we had not met the police chief, and I think that's why I was invited, because I kind of have been stalking everyone. However, it was an amazing event, I felt better about the safety of the city and the future of where we're going with the police department, I just wanted to say that.
I, I believe it was run by ACRL and a couple of other businessmen.
Thank you. Um, next, uh, the Spirit Festival was amazing, I got to go on the very last day. Um, I was supposed to be there for business to see one of the performers that was there, but I couldn't stay off the dance floor. Got to meet so many of my neighbors and we just had a really good time. So I just wanted to say thank you to everybody at Parks and Recs and anyone else who helped sponsor or put on that event, it was amazing. Uh, post the videos, Kim. All right, that's it for me, have a great weekend, everybody.
You didn't use up your extra minute.
You want me to keep going?
I mean, you wanted an extra minute, I said, I give it to you.
So I'm just playing, I'm just playing, have a good night, everybody.
Good night. Anybody else from the audience?
Move to adjourn?
What way? No, 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 still residents.
We have another.
Oh, you got one more. William R. Davis, better known as Red when I had red hair. I live on, uh, well, let me see, Lock Loman, Dearborn Heights. There's two things I was gonna bring up tonight. I'm a retired UAW member, as an international rep, I'm also a delegate for the retirees. The two things I was gonna bring up, one, I don't have to bring up anymore because the discussion was always, already made about Warren Valley. It's a shame, but things happen, but being a city that we are, since I've been a resident here since nineteen eighty-five, we'll bring it back. That's all it takes, hard work, and we're a hard-working city. The second thing I'm gonna bring up is blight. And on my street, there's only eighteen houses, and four of the residents on my, on my street have garbage out there, and I mean garbage, I mean living room furniture, couches, doors. It's been there for three weeks. I already talked to priority, they don't pick that stuff up. You have to call the city, and they'll send someone out to pick it up, or you can take it, get rid of it yourself. One of the guys that have a whole living room furniture there, and I'm gonna talk to him, has a body shop. Well, he can put that shit in his body shop, I don't care to look at it all the time, I'm sorry about that.
Okay, thank you.
That's just the way I get when I get.
I got you.
I gotta reframe on that, I've been told.
Never heard that word before, so I got confused.
Yeah, I've been told that at other meetings, but I was that one today and was told that. But at that meeting, it didn't matter because the guy I was talking about was an ex-president, and I'm not supposed to talk about politics either, but that wasn't politics, that was just a fool. But that was it, I just want to make sure that, uh, we know about it, because I talked to priority, I see it, Ray, and, uh, they don't pick that garbage up. Now, it's been three weeks, like I said, I only got eighteen houses on my street, and I gotta drive by it every day. So I know you guys will take care of it, the cities take care of a lot of stuff, I thank you for your time, and you all take care.
Thank you, Red. Thank you, brother, UAW member.
Oh, and you'll be seeing me a lot more now since the virus is getting under control, because I come to the meetings, and I'm also a TIPA board member.
Looking forward to it, thank you. I still pay my dues, retire too.
Mariana Hernandez, North Lafayette Street, um, speaking as a resident.
Thank you.
But also as a chief of staff. I heard rumors that there's a new IT director in the city of Dearborn Heights, and today I've heard a lot of complaints with regards to the communication programs, and I'm sure that's going to be one of the priorities that this new IT director will be addressing on implementing new communication methods for our residents and our, uh, community. So just wanted to say that.
Great.
And mayor, can you introduce us to the new IT director at some point?
We introduced him during the last meeting. On the last meeting, but you know what, uh, Mr. Mayor, if you could at least announce the name and, and, is he here? I don't think he's here.
No, actually, he, he.
Yeah, we introduced him in the last meeting, Mariana, but.
Yeah, David Cooper, and, uh, yeah, we, we're lucky to have him, and, uh, he's already identified a lot of issues. And as I said it before, we're about twenty years behind here in the city of Dearborn Heights, so, and he's gonna get us up to speed.
You're being nice by twenty years.
The next century.
So what we've gone, for those in the audience, what we've gone to is, we have our own IT department versus what we had in the past, where we had split that between ourselves and Dearborn with, um, uh, Dearborn IT. Now we have our own IT department, and mayor was able to save us a lot of money and still get our own IT department, so.
Council chair, one more last item.
It's in a good direction. Wait one second, and then a controller, the new controller, please.
Yeah, so we have an, also, uh, not a permanent, yeah.
Intern.
But interim controllers, so, uh, we, we can bring her to the next meeting, she actually left a few minutes, a little bit ago.
She was here earlier.
Yeah, so she'll, we'll make sure.
Thank you.
Real, real quick, councilman, if you don't mind, please.
Quick, please.
Yes, it'll be quick. Uh, we spoke about computers for up here for council. We could surely get rid of all of this paper and all the work that our, our, our council secretary does. I mean, I got a, a tree right here. So, um, I know we had money in our account, I'd like to have computers up here for us to use at city council to eliminate all of this.
Anybody else in the audience? Any more public comments? Anybody on Zoom?
Move to adjourn?
Wait, one sec, let's just make sure, one sec, one sec, one sec, let's make sure. Nobody else? Okay.